Good evening, everyone. Thank you for joining us for the meeting of the Cloverdale City Council. We'll call the meeting to order at 6:01. Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mike, when ready, could we get a roll call, please?
Thank you, Mayor. Let the record reflect that all council members are present with the exception of Vice Mayor Walter.
Thank you. Any conflict of interest declarations from anyone? Seeing none. Any changes or deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, no changes to the agenda this evening.
Thank you, David. Moving on to B, public comment. Any person wishing to speak to the city council on any item not listed on the agenda may do so at this time. Members of the public have the right to speak on any item on the council agenda at the time the item comes up for consideration. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council is not allowed to consider issues or take action on any item not listed on the agenda. Three minutes are typically allotted to each speaker. Do you have anyone in the audience that wants to make a public comment? Please come forward.
Thank you. I'm sure what I'm about to say is no surprise to anyone here. I am here to formally announce that the Board of the Rotary Club of Cloverdale has decided to cancel the Rotary Peace Project. While I disagree with my board, I must abide and respect the decision for the sake of peace within my club. I ask you to reverse and decline the proposed peace flag as commemorative flag approved for flying over city property. I want to personally apologize to the city council, as well as the community of Cloverdale, for my inability to get this project across the finish line. I would now like to speak as a member of Rotary and the Cloverdale community, as a concerned citizen, if you will. I certainly do not speak for all Rotarians, or obviously the community of Cloverdale. Citizens of Cloverdale need to speak up for their beliefs, views, and visions for this town. You know I had a peace project. What is peace? Is it life without tension and stress? I think not. We have tension and stress in our families, but through compromise, we find peace. We have tension and stress in the organizations we join, but through compromise, we find peace. As members of society, we find tension and stress in our daily lives and the world, and the only, and only through compromise, can we find peace. We can only find peace in society and the world by considering and understanding the needs or views of others and seeking the greater good. Albert Einstein once said, "Peace cannot be kept by force, it can only be achieved by understanding." The opposite of peace is tension, angst, anger, a life of agitation, and I assume ultimately war. And do not think of war in the traditional military sense, simply look at social media. You will find neighbors at war with each other, friends and families at war over, at war with each other because we can find no compromise in our views. We find no peace when compromise is not an option. When compromise is not an option, we're placing our singular vision above all others. We think we are most certainly correct, and our adversary is wrong. We will do anything it takes for our side to win. If disrupting meetings, boycotting the good works of organizations, businesses, or individuals, we will do exactly that. If shouting down our opposition so their voice is not heard, we will do exactly that. We will go to war. Our singular focus is more important than other considerations. War becomes our only answer. Peace is not, peace is not, peace is not, war is not the answer. Peace is the only answer. Everybody loses in war. I'm going to end this with the quote that was going to be attached to the Rotary Peace Project. Courageous people do not fear forgiving for the sake of peace. Nelson Mandela said that, certainly a person that knows injustice and discrimination. He still sought compromise and in the end, peace. Thank you for your approval of the project, and again, my personal apologies for not getting it done. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, sir, and thank you for your hard work. We, as a council, appreciate it. Anyone else in the audience like to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move to the virtual.
Thank you, Mayor. No one is raising their hand online at this time.
For those of you online, raise your hand if you'd like to make a public comment. I'll give you a few more seconds just in case. Seeing none, we'll move on to C, communications. Council may discuss at this time written communications sent to council members since the last council meeting. Written communications to be discussed will be listed below if any. Do we have anything that was not listed, David, that we need to talk about? Thank you. Next is the student liaison report. Teresa, for her final, final.
Good evening, everyone. Today for my report, I have that the WASC, W-A-S-C, report from earlier this year. CHS received accreditation for six years and received highest of recommendations. Seniors picked up their caps and gowns on the 18th after their portfolio presentations. May 30th is Senior Awards Night at 6:00. June 1st is the annual grad walk. Finals are June 5th through 8th, which are all minimum days. Last day of school is June 8th, and graduation on June 9th at 6:00. Two CHS students have their upward bound graduation at 6:00 tomorrow at Sonoma State. Summer school forums are available for students who wish to attend to summer school. Spring play, The Good Doctor, will be performed June 1st, 2nd, and 3rd at CHS. Community Unity Day went very well with Senator McGuire, Mayor Lands, and council member Brian Wheeler speaking and helping students with their service projects. Sixteen athletes made it to NCS Class A meet. Five of them made it to championships in Dublin, and we have our sports banquet tomorrow at 6:00. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Teresa. And I want to be the first one to say thank you for all your hard work you've put in. This is not an easy position to come sit in front of the city and YouTube and everyone else in the world and speak on items that we have listed that are, you know, some adult things, some community-wide, including the children. So we appreciate all your hard work and the way that you've just managed yourself and presented yourself, and you've done wonderful. So thank you so much. Anyone else?
I'd like to say the same thing, Teresa. Thank you very much. It's a joy to, to hear all the, everything going on at the Cloverdale High School. Some of us don't get down there very often, and it's nice to kind of keep up on it, and, and I really wish you luck. Thank you for coming down and in all your future. I think you're going to do great, and thank you very much for taking the time and coming down and speaking to the council. I appreciate it.
I'm going to say congratulations, and please don't be a stranger. We've had other school liaisons kind of come back and touch base on this and what they were doing, and it's always fun to see what you're working on, and then you can catch up and see what hopefully we've been working on. So have a great summer, and I look forward to hearing back about all your accomplishments. You're an amazing, accomplished young lady, and you know, thank you for stepping up and doing this.
Thank you. You did a very excellent job, and yes, do come back and let us know how your college education is going.
I just want to say thank you for giving me this opportunity to just, like, be able to put in my input from just representing, just like my school in general. And I just want to say, like, I will definitely come back. I will definitely be checking in with all of you and check in from once in a while.
Thank you.
Mayor, I'd just like to remind our student liaison that her role comes with a little prize at the end, and I encourage Teresa to submit her paperwork so she can get the full scholarship award that is provided by the sponsors that support the student liaison program. Don't let too much time go by. Get your documentation in so we can make the financial contribution towards your scholarship to help you out with your, your college endeavors.
And if anything happens, let me know. My daughter had a difficult time figuring out how to navigate. We took care of it really quick, so you can always call me. I want you to tell everyone here in our audience what your major is in college.
For everyone here, I'm majoring in mathematics at UC Davis.
So even though you're going to come back, you'll be looking down upon us. It's okay. All right, the next, can we, should we do a picture? Your last meeting was a picture.
Yeah, I'd like to do a picture.
Do you mind?
I think since Teresa's studying mathematics, can you all say pi?
Okay. Next is our proclamations. The first one, E1, is a proclamation for Older Americans Month.
A proclamation of the city council of the city of Cloverdale declaring May 2023 Older Americans Month in Cloverdale. Whereas the city of Cloverdale is home to older Americans who enrich and strengthen our community, and whereas Cloverdale includes a growing number of older Americans who have built resilience and strength over their lives through successes and difficulties, and whereas Cloverdale benefits when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are included and encouraged to share their successes and stories of resilience, and whereas Cloverdale recognizes our need to nurture ourselves, reinforce our strength, and continue to thrive in times of both joy and difficulty. Whereas Cloverdale can foster communities of strength by creating opportunities to share stories and learn from each other, engaging older adults through education, recreation, and service, and encouraging people of all ages to celebrate connections and resilience, and whereas the city of Cloverdale is proud to honor the history and contributions of older Americans in our community of Cloverdale throughout our state and nation, and whereas the month of May 2023 represents an opportunity to acknowledge and thank older Americans and those who support them, like the Cloverdale Senior Center for their significant contributions to our community. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the city of Cloverdale does hereby declare May 2023 as Older Americans Month in Cloverdale, and urges all residents to recognize older adults and the people who support them as essential contributors to the strength of our community.
Thank you. And tonight, we have Linda and Sandra to accept this proclamation. And Al, perfect. Saw him walk in last minute, that's right.
No, you go ahead. I'll do that. This is the one? This is what you sent me? Good morning, good evening, hello. First of all, I apologize for actually coming in late. I was excited to be here. I brought my grandchildren here because we had an emergency at home, and so they are with me, but they've never been to a city council meeting before, so I appreciate your indulgence. Okay. All right, so I had paper all written out, you know, and Sandra is amazing, and I don't have the paper with me for obvious reasons. So first of all, let me thank you, city council members, Mayor Lands, for this proclamation, and I'm going to go ahead and read this to you. Thank you, city council, for this proclamation, recognizing Older Americans Month. The Cloverdale Senior Multipurpose Center is truly honored to accept this recognition on behalf of the old adults in our community. This proclamation serves as a reminder of the valuable contribution older Americans make and the wealth and wisdom of the experience that they have. It's important that we continue to celebrate and to support our older population, ensuring their well-being, their inclusion, and active participation in our society, something that is important and well-needed across our whole country. And so we gratefully accept this proclamation, and we thank you again.
Thank you. Wait before you leave. We had a very hot, burning question. For you, you have to answer this honestly. What is an older American?
An older American is anyone who feels older.
So you're running for a political position, I see.
Thank you.
Thank you. Can we get a picture with you guys, please?
Thank you, Sandra.
Thank you.
I have a personal interview. Seventy-one, that's my age, but I'm my age is zero. For membership, the senior sasers, twenty-one. Twenty-one.
Are you concerned, Tom?
Very.
All right. Now we will move on to E2, the proclamation for Jewish American Heritage Month.
A proclamation of the city council of the city of Cloverdale proclaiming May 2023 Jewish American Heritage Month in Cloverdale. Whereas Jewish Americans have been an important part of the American story and have greatly contributed to all areas of American life and culture since our nation's earliest days, and whereas on April 20th, 2006, the federal government proclaimed May as Jewish American Heritage Month, stating, "As a nation of immigrants, the United States is better and stronger because Jewish people from all over the world have chosen to become American citizens." And since then, proclamations in support of Jewish American Heritage Month have been made by presidents of the United States annually, and whereas generations of Jews have fled to the United States in search of a better life for themselves and their families, and these immigrants made invaluable contributions in support of equality and civil rights through their leadership and achievements, and whereas Jewish Americans connect to their Jewish identity in a variety of ways, such as culturally, ethnically, religiously, and by following Jewish ethics and values. And whereas Jewish Americans are racially, ethnically, socially, politically, and economically diverse, and around 25% of the Bay Area Jewish households include a person of color, increasing to nearly 40% of households if the head of the household is younger than 35. And whereas in 2022, Jewish Americans faced a dramatic rise in anti-Semitic incidents, 36% higher than in 2021, including but not limited to physical attacks, vandalism, verbal and physical harassment, and hateful comments posted on social media. And whereas the city of Cloverdale shares an obligation to condemn and combat antisemitism and wherever it exists, to include Jewish Americans in all facets of civil life, and to stand with the Jewish American community against hatred or bigotry in our city and country. And whereas there is a need for education and policies that are culturally competent when describing, discussing, or addressing the impacts of being Jewish in all aspects of American society, including discourse and policy, and whereas we celebrate the rich and diverse heritage of the Jewish American community, including those who live, work, and play in the city of Cloverdale, and whereas we recognize Jewish American commitment to civil engagement, and how Sonoma County and the city of Cloverdale has been enriched by local Jewish institutions and synagogues, such as the Jewish Community Center of Santa Rosa. Therefore, be it resolved that the city of Cloverdale hereby declares the month of May as Jewish American Heritage Month in appreciation of the achievements and contributions made by members of the Jewish community. The Cloverdale City Council calls upon all residents to celebrate Jewish Americans who have woven the fabric of our country and community, and supports opportunities to learn more about Jewish American history and culture. Therefore, be it further resolved that the city of Cloverdale will continue efforts to confront antisemitism and other forms of hate impacting the Jewish community, support local education about the diversity of our Jewish American community, and integrate Jewish American culture into future programs, activities, and ceremonies throughout the year.
Thank you. And unfortunately, the person that was supposed to receive the proclamation, Alejandro, was unable to make it tonight. He is part of the Jewish Community Relations Council. E3 is a proclamation for Police Week and Police Officer Memorial Day. Chief?
About to use this one, is that better? All right, great. City of Cloverdale, City Council proclamation, Police Week and Peace Officer Memorial Day. Whereas law enforcement officers play an essential role in ensuring our safety and in safeguarding our rights and freedoms, and whereas our officers partner with citizens to keep our community as safe as possible by enforcing traffic laws, proactive policing, and forming neighborhood watch groups, and whereas when an unsafe situation does arise, officers are the first to respond and provide assistance, often at significant risk to their safety. And whereas Cloverdale police officers continue to face increased danger, both seen and unseen, and scrutiny in the performance of their official duties, and whereas our officers recognize their duty to serve our citizens by safeguarding life and property, by protecting them against violence and disorder, and by protecting the innocent against deception and the weak against oppression. And whereas, City of Cloverdale police officers responded to calls for service, provided needed security, and participated in numerous community events. And whereas, the Congress and the President of the United States have established May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officers Memorial Day, and the week in which it falls is National Police Week. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Todd Lands of the city of Cloverdale, proclaim May 15th, 2023, as Peace Officer Memorial Day, and the week of May 14th through May 20th, as Police Week in the city of Cloverdale, and urge all citizens to mark this occasion with appropriate ceremonies commemorating police officers past and present who by their faithful and loyal devotion have collectively preserved our rights and our security, and further extend our appreciation to our Chief of Police, Jason Ferguson, and his staff, Police Lieutenant Chris Parker, Police Sergeant Salvatore Berusso, Rudy Segobiano, Police Officers Kevin Burt, John Camara, Damian Eaglesfield, Beau Gastino, Jason Mora, Carlos Nunez, Ricky Rhodes, Jim Stratton, Katie Venoni. Presented this day, May 24th, 2023. Todd Lands, Mayor.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
Every year, I go on and on and on, so I'll keep it short. I'm just going to say thank you for all the hard work you've done and the amount of hours that we put in, being short-staffed, injured, all the issues, the large cases you've taken on and found a resolve. Our community really appreciates that, to know that no one is, is going to be just let go, and no, no case will go unsolved. We're going to keep pushing until we can get resolution for everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we appreciate those words.
Chief, can we all have a picture with you? And Sandra, I have something for you. I forgot to give you this.
More proclamations, getting better shape. Yeah, that's right, huh? Ten a meeting. Now, or under information, or when? We can do it now. That's fine, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention something else also that was brought to my attention, and with all the projects that we have going on at the parks, and everything's looking great, and that I wanted to recognize our Public Works Department, because May 21st through the 27th is National Public Works Week. So Derek, and your team, and all the Public Works guys, thank you very much for doing what you do. Parks are looking awesome, and we appreciate everything. So thank you.
Thank you. Sincerely apologize for not having it on here, and we'll make it up, I promise. And moving on to presentations, F1, a presentation from the Cloverdale City Chamber of Commerce and Resilient Cloverdale. We have Nina. I turned your microphone off, so you'll have to turn it back on, Nina.
Mayor Lands, council members, department heads, and Attorney Sanchez, city manager and assistant city manager, and Michael, the audience. I'm Nina Handchat. I'm the ED, Executive Director of the Cloverdale Chamber of Commerce. I have been up here many, many times before. I'm getting almost to the point where I'm comfortable with it. So I, this is just basically an opportunity to tell you all the good stuff we've been doing and hearing from you, if that's, if we've kind of swerved from the goal. doing and hearing from you if that's, if we've kind of swerved from the goal and to reinforce the things that we have been doing. So I'm not going to go through all the PowerPoint slides that I sent and you have in your agenda, but I just want to kind of do the high level. So Experience Cloverdale is our marketing umbrella. It's been our marketing umbrella for about five years. And it's not so much Experience Cloverdale because like Savannah hears me say all the time, you can experience a sore throat. So it's the line underneath where you can, you can get the, you can get beautifully ground coffee in Cloverdale. You can jump out of a perfectly good plane at 12,000 feet. Where Will at Ace Hardware is the nicest guy in town. So that's Cloverdale. Where if you, if you, if you stop, you just might stay. So anyway, that's the, that's sort of the behind the scenes on why Experience Cloverdale seems to work almost no matter what. So if, Michael, could we go to the next slide? We work together. We are Team Cloverdale. David coined that some time ago and we try to fill in the gaps and you always seem to help us when we need help and hopefully we return that same, that same level of enthusiasm. We take care of our businesses. We, we deliver monthly bags to new residents and renters, new homeowners, but also renters if the property owners let us know. We distribute coupons from, from businesses, our, our restaurants, all different kinds of things like that. There's a letter from me in there telling people how to reach us. We do a sort of a recap of annual events. And although our, our deliveries are down quite a bit from last year, it's still kind of a fun thing to do. And it's, it's interesting because people come in and they say, well, I moved here about a year ago and they, and then we talk a bit and they said, you said, you left me a bag. And I, nobody's ever done that before. So it's kind of sweet, very homespun. Michael? Just a couple of pictures. We use social media to the best of our ability. My ability is like really unnegligible, but Savannah's isn't. So we do Experience Cloverdale, we do Shop Local Cloverdale, and we use our website to promote our businesses, our events, and that kind of thing. We have a brand new job page, which is still kind of a work in progress. You can put a job on, but you can't take it off. So, but I, I can do that behind the scenes. So we're working on it, lots of works in progress. Next page, please. We, we did not have the idea of Wine Walk, but one of our business, two of our businesses came in and said, what do you think? And first Saturday of the month, we do a Cloverdale Wine Walk. Well, January was a, what do you call, atmospheric river and it was canceled, but the rest, all, all of them rained. At some point it was rain, sometimes hail, sometimes wind, but always rain. But they were great. They were really good. About 13 businesses participated between 12 and 13, actually. And we're going to resume that in October. We wanted to give summer time for Friday Night Live and for the other myriad of events that people have to choose from. Next slide, please. Just a couple of graphics. Our, our second annual Fourth of July Parade and Fair is going to happen on, guess what? July 4th. So we're really looking forward to it. If you're interested in being in the parade, the parade entry form is up. And if you have a problem with that, you just let us know that you want to be part of it. It was, it was really fun last year. How many entries did we have last year?
Twenty.
About 20, I think we'll have even more this year. So thank you for participating, letting us close the boulevard and making that happen. People really seemed to like it. Car show's coming up in September, September 9th. We had the Downtown Winter Festival, bigger, better than ever, beautiful weather, loved it. Everybody seemed to love it. So that's going to happen again. We don't, I'm sure there'll be some changes and things, but look forward to that. It'll be December 1st. Summer Sidewalk Sale is in August. It involves any business that wants to participate, even if they want to pop up, that's fine too. The longest table is a brand new addition this year. And the person who's responsible for that and the idea is Deborah Jack. Don't let me call her Deborah James. Deborah Jack, there she is. And again, she came into the office and said, what do you think? And it seemed to be a very suitable fit for Cloverdale. And with the help of the Police Department, lots of volunteers, and our First Street Businesses, it was, it was really good. We broke bread together. It was a little bit warm, but it didn't rain. It wasn't super windy, but people seemed to really like it, so. Anything I need to say about that? Anything more than that? Yeah, 30 tables end to end, ton of fun. You brought your own food or you got it from a restaurant, you shared it with others. It, it was pretty sweet. We had some music that was perfect for the occasion. It just worked. Thank you, Deborah. Yay, yay, yay. We're doing downtown trick or treat on Halloween. I, I don't know what day Halloween is. I think it might be a Tuesday, but we'll do it and get businesses to have wonderful candy, maybe Red Vines. Councilmember Wheeler. Next slide, please. Just, just, I mean, we seem to be part of the fabric of this town, thank goodness. We worked really hard to get a brand new website, cloverready.org, up and running. And now we're in the process of rolling it out to the neighborhoods. And on, at your places, you'll see a little two, two by two inch QR code where that will take you directly, which are going out of date, right, David? No more QRs, they're not cool. They, they're cool for me, makes it easy. So you, all you do is take a picture of it, it takes you to cloverready.org and it takes less than four minutes to be 100% clover ready. So try it, do it, please, do it, do it, do it. What, take out, take out your phones and do it now? You could do it right now if you want to. You'll, I, I will get a sandwich, right? Yeah, if, if you do it 100% clover ready, I'll get credit. And that's okay. I, I'm doing it for the community, not the sandwich. Incentives are fun, you're right. Okay, so we, yeah, so you could, I mean, you, you want to listen to me, but you could do both because it's so simple, so simple. It's in Spanish and English. Toggle to the Spanish and you'll get it. But it gives you an opportunity to do four things, simple, simple things, to be ready in the event of an evacuation of the City of Cloverdale. Whether it's from a fire, a flood, a natural gas leak, whatever, bad accident. So we are in the process of readying the Red Ears. Are you ready? Are you 100% clover ready? We're calling those people Red Ears. And we've done one training session, we're rolling it out to neighborhoods soon, to a neighborhood near you, soon. When is it at the Senior Center? Soon. First week of June at the Senior Center. Thank you, Becky. Just some things that we do. We do the State of the City Breakfast, we do mixers, we do, what don't we do? I know we could do more, always do more. We have a lot of fun doing it, though. So next slide, please. What?
We updated our website, it's here to be ADA compliant, so that was a big one for us.
So everything we add to it also has to be ADA compliant. It's kind of a lot of work for little me.
That's your last slide.
Oh, is that it?
That's it.
Oh, good enough. So, good. Well, that was relatively pain free. So good. So I guess I'd like to ask, oh, I didn't introduce Savannah Hemphill, which you, who you all know, right? Becky Ennis, Rebecca Ennis. So there's some works in progress that we're working on, but I delineated those for you so we don't need to go over those because they are in progress. When they're done, I'll let you know, fait accompli. So questions, concerns?
Any questions?
Compliments. Positive reinforcement.
Nina, Savannah, yeah, I know how you guys hit the ground running. I, I get dizzy watching Savannah drive around town. She's nonstop going somewhere and that includes you too, Nina. I really appreciate everything you guys do. I'm a frequent flyer down there and thank you for the Red Vines. I know where the stash is, so yeah, I'll be down there. But yeah, just thank you for the car shows and how you guys can kick those off and, and all the projects you guys have going down there. It's greatly appreciated. It brings a lot to Cloverdale and you are, you're the backbone of Cloverdale. So thank you very much and I appreciate it from all you guys.
Thank you. Nice to hear that. And basically, we want to bring people downtown. That's our mission. That's our mission in life. Regional visitors, people in town, discover this place, rediscover this place. Please.
I want to thank you for everything you do to keep Cloverdale interesting for all of us.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilmember Morgenstern.
You know, Nina, you said something a little bit ago. You called it the fabric of Cloverdale. I think you're more of the seamstress of Cloverdale because the fabric is thousands of little pieces that are worthless on their own, but you bring them all together. And so when you do things like the Halloween trick or treat, you do the car shows, you do the Fourth of July, there was thousands of people at the car show, the winter festival, thousands of people there. That's amazing to bring everyone together with something so simple done by such as a small town and a small group of people.
Yeah, we do a lot with a little.
You do, it really is. And we are so thankful to have you.
Thank you. Thanks for the kudos, y'all. Thanks. So.
Anyone else? David, Kevin, anybody? Good? Anyone in the public?
Audience.
Can you answer questions? Well, thank you very much for your presentation, Nina. Thank you for everything.
I'm easy to follow.
Becky, it's your turn.
Becky, you're on.
It's not easy to follow, Nina.
We all know.
Yeah, it's not. Sorry, I have to take these off because I can't read and look at that at the same time. So, hard to follow, Nina, but some of you know who I am. My name's Becky Ennis. I am, consider myself the facilitator, backbone support to the Resilient Cloverdale Initiative and clover ready. For the council members I have not met yet, just a little bit about me. I served as Executive Director for the Cloverdale Senior Center up until about four years ago, and then I am now Executive Director for SOS Community Counseling, which we serve your community. We provide mental health services for your youth through the school district. So still very much consider myself a Cloverdale champion, if you will. And so I just wanted to talk to you a little bit about some of the work that Resilient Cloverdale has done over the past couple of years. But I also remembered I was up here last May for Mental Health Awareness Month. So did you guys do that one again? Did you? Okay, then. I'll see you in September for suicide prevention.
There you go.
Okay. So the Resilient Cloverdale Social Cohesion Survey, how did this all get started? So there are a lot of names up there that probably most of you don't recognize, but really the one name we need to remember is Daniel Holmesy. And who can't remember that? So Daniel, what happened was to go back to the PSPS event and Kinkade Fire. Daniel's mother, Kay Wells, lives here in Cloverdale and Daniel works for the City and County of San Francisco in their emergency department. When that was going on, Daniel came up to visit his mom, came down to the fairgrounds and saw everything that was going on down there to serve the community and said, I want to talk to the city. So I'm assuming he went to David or Kevin or someone or, yeah, Melanie. And, and this is how it kind of all began. So we did a debrief with the community after that event here at the fairgrounds. There were a lot of people there and Resilient Cloverdale was born. And so we met weekly all through the pandemic, virtually with the chief and all of the organizations, the chamber, community members. And this social cohesion survey that I'm going to share with you was a grant funded by the USGS, United States Geological Survey. They saw what was happening here in Cloverdale. They're very much looking at the Hayward Fault Line and what would happen after the big earthquake. And they looked at Cloverdale and said, wow, you guys got basically cut off from everything during that PSPS and you handled yourselves. Let's study that and let's see what's going on. So this is a little bit of that. I'll take the next slide, please. So why the social cohesion survey? So as I mentioned, Daniel brought all of these resources together and we're basically looking at the impacts of disasters, how they've compounded upon themselves in the last six years, and how Cloverdale needs to address and continue to address the disparities within the community between various populations of residents. I'm ready to move. Thank you. So just for a little bit of the background, we did this in two waves. We did surveys in spring of 2021 and then we did a second round of that same survey in 2022. And the surveys were distributed via hand, paper, online, word of mouth, throughout the community. And this is just a little bit of the demographics that are represented in the survey. So as you can see, we're heavily overrepresented by women answering the survey, but that's fairly typical of women to answer surveys. But as far as the rest of the population goes, we're pretty on point with how the current population of Cloverdale actually looks and what our survey actually looks like. Next slide, please. Okay. I got it for you. So you might look at this and be like, not really sure. So there are just basically two things that I would like to really take away here. So the first are, on the left-hand side, this is our first survey data results. And just real quickly, the, I call that dark blue, but some people call it purple. That is representative of the Hispanic or Latino identifying residents that took the survey. The lighter blue would be our white, non-Hispanic surveys. And then of course, the green would be anyone that indicated other. And so on the first side, that's spring of 2021. And you can see that the colored dots are fairly separated and divided. So forget the, all the white line, beehive, nest type thing, but just the dots in and of themselves are divided in that you can see that the Hispanic or Latino identifying residents are predominantly on one side of that red line and everyone else is predominantly on the other side. And then as you can see in the second, on the right-hand side, that is summer of 2022, those dots are a little bit more blended and closer together. So basically, you want to know that the dots are closer together on the second, on the right-hand side, and that the colors are more mixed, and that's important. So why is that important? Well, if we were to go back to the third slide, you'd see that we did that first wave in spring of 21, the second wave of surveys we did in the summer of 2022, so that's about 13 months apart. And what the data is suggesting is that the work of Resilient Cloverdale and all of its affiliated organizations have improved the organizational ties within the Cloverdale community and that there is no longer that clear divide between Spanish-speaking and English-speaking residents. So that's positive news. There could definitely be some other factors that are involved in that time period. So for example, nuestra comunidad, la familia sana, both very much stood up during that time period as well, but they are also part of Resilient Cloverdale in that co-ed. So the fingers kind of stretch out. So those are sort of the main two takeaways of this graph right here. Next slide, please. Just pulling out a couple of what I feel to be interesting points of data collection. So on the top graph, I don't know if you can necessarily see it because the little zoom thing is above air, but the, but the top graph is the annual household income as reported by the individuals that took this survey, residents of Cloverdale. And what really stands out for me is that 47% of the Spanish-speaking population makes less than $40,000 a year in Cloverdale. 44% of the Spanish-speaking residents in Cloverdale earn anywhere between $40,000 to $60,000 a year. So in total, that's 61% of Spanish-speaking Cloverdale residents make less than $60,000 a year as compared to English-speaking at 34%. The current poverty income guidelines indicate that 61% of Spanish-speaking Cloverdale residents are making, if a family of five, they are at that poverty line. So I just wanted to make sure that that was brought to the council's attention. The second graph below that, this is an age demographic and I believe it's English in blue and Spanish, yeah, English in blue and Spanish in orange. This one I like because I think what we could do here, and I talk about it a little bit farther in the next couple of slides, is an opportunity here. So this is an opportunity for younger Spanish-speaking or possibly bilingual residents of Cloverdale to assist English-speaking older residents. So going back to our older American So going back to our older Americans in our senior centers, this is a great opportunity potentially to bring in some programming, to have some cross-generational ideas and activities to help people help each other from young to old. So I just thought I'd bring that forward as well. Next slide, please. So here, two graphs. And again, the top graph is indicators of trust within the community. It's okay, Michael. I know you're trying. The top graph is indicators of trust. The bottom graph are indicators of preparedness. And so what we did here is we asked questions that basically all led to these, what do I want to say, sentences or indicators of each of those. So basically, the higher the number, the more trust, the higher the number, more people felt prepared. Again, I think what we should note here is that the Spanish-speaking population reported lower on all levels of trust and preparedness but one, which was felt supported by community organizations. And that is the fourth down from the top. No, sorry. No, sixth. See, contacts, I should get them. So six down from the top. So again, going back to CBOs, your community organizations, the Senior Center, la familia sana, nuestra comunidad, other organizations that serve the community, that is where our Spanish-speaking residents report the most trust and preparedness. So in the last, I think this is my last slide, next one? No, I have two more. Okay. So recommendations, I could definitely let you read those. Again, personally, I think the points to note would be that the work of Resilient Cloverdale needs to continue long term. I want to thank the council for supporting Resilient Cloverdale, the chamber, providing some financial support. Now for this position, which is nice, thank you very much, and that the city needs to continue to invest in this. And Chief Ferguson has given a lot of time to this program. Would love to see it continue. Also wanted to note that there is to establish a network, yeah, number two, establishing a network of coordinating organizations. Well, that is Resilient Cloverdale. That is the chamber. So, you know, we're here, we're doing that. And we want to keep calling community into conversation. So I really want to empower and encourage council that, yes, we have these formal city council meetings where we ask public for their comments and questions and concerns, but really to have you all be out in those other meetings and out in community. And I know that you are in your ways because you have all your reports, but to continue to do that and to really push for that. And then I think the last slide is yes. So again, these are my opinions based on data, so take it for what it's worth. But here's something, four things that I think that the community of Cloverdale can put into practice. So all of that to say, I think there's more to come. We're definitely continuing, myself, part of the team that was mentioned on the first slide, Professor Jennifer Shea, her graduate students. There is still writing being done, analyzation of data being done, so I can always come and bring back more when it's like final, final and published. But in the meantime, we wanted to make sure that this still stayed on everybody's radar because I do think Resilient Cloverdale is an excellent opportunity to develop your community and really be resilient for generations to come. Thank you.
Thank you, Becky. Questions, comments? Anyone want to go? I speak to Daniel about once a week, and he's more like the Tasmanian Daniel versus just a Daniel. He's a handful.
Pretty much.
Yeah, he's a lot of energy, all bound up in that little tiny guy. So it's great. You two are killing it and you're creating something very special for our town. So thank you for all your hard work.
Thank you.
Chief knows. I see him nodding his head when I said that. He's like, oh, yeah. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mayor.
Any questions from the public? Seeing none? All right.
We did not specify in the survey, so it was how they answered is how they answered.
Because I know they take about 40% out of my paycheck. So if I wasn't paying all that.
I. Yeah, I cannot speak to that. That wasn't how the question was phrased in the survey.
How were the questions distributed? Do you want to refer to the survey's distribution?
Do you want me, sir?
We're going to have it as much as he comes, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, oh, please.
My name is James Smith. I'm just asking about the survey.
No, it's great. We just have to do it in the formal fashion, sir, and I appreciate you stepping up and asking the questions.
Yeah, so I understood that the survey had been done twice, two different years, and I'm curious about the methodology. I've lived here over 20, and I didn't see an opportunity to participate in a survey. So I'm just curious about the survey. When they reported the income, I was curious to know whether or not that income was based on W2s or all income, whether or not taxes have been paid on it or not. There's just some questions I had about the survey. I was hoping to get answered.
Perfect, thank you. I'll have Becky answer the questions. Yes, please, Becky, if you want to respond. And then you can go.
I'm trying to talk to you also and talking to the mic. So the survey was distributed in a couple different formats. The organizations that are part of Resilient Cloverdale, they had all received the survey to distribute amongst their networks. However, that way they wanted to do it, it was electronic. And there were also paper copies as well, both in English and in Spanish. In terms of the annual income, again, that question, and I would be happy to share the survey tool with you. If you wanted to share your information, I could give you a copy of what was given out. But I do believe that particular question around income didn't state any qualifications. It was simply a matter of checkboxes and people would then, you know, check off where they saw their annual income and fill it in that way. I hope that's helpful.
Thank you, Becky. Appreciate it. Anything else? Thank you. All right, we'll move on to F2, a presentation for Lyme Disease Month.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council. Tonight is a presentation on Lyme Disease Month by Ms. Dorothy Leland. Dorothy is joining us via Zoom. She's joining us on behalf of LymeDisease.org. LymeDisease.org is a nonprofit organization that was established back in 1989. It's a grassroots organization that is, you know, functions as kind of a data house for folks that may be impacted by Lyme disease. It serves to empower patients with data and information. And tonight, Dorothy's going to give an overview of Lyme disease prevention to the council in recognition that this is kind of Lyme Disease Prevention Month. With that, I'll turn it over to Ms. Leland, who should be joining us via Zoom.
Can you hear us?
Can you hear me? Okay, okay, let me start in my video. Do you have it there? Okay. I realized today that somehow when I sent you the slides, I left one of them out. So I'm going to leave it on this slide a little bit longer because I'm going to be talking about ticks, and that's a picture of a tick up there. But so as mentioned, my name is Dorothy Leland, and I'm president of LymeDisease.org. We advocate nationally for Lyme patients, and we help educate the public, and we take part in research geared towards helping find a cure for Lyme disease and other tick-borne infections. So thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak to you tonight. As mentioned, this is Lyme Disease Awareness Month, and there's a lot, there's actually been a lot of activity this year. I've noticed there's been more stories in the press and everything. I think people are sort of getting to a critical mass where people are paying attention to this, and it's, of course, very important. The first question is, what are ticks anyway? And as I said, what I apparently inadvertently left out was a picture that showed a tick on somebody's finger, which is a lot smaller than this one you're seeing here in this picture. They're just little itty-bitty things, and they're easy to overlook. Some of you may have come across ticks on your pets, if not on yourselves. They aren't insects, actually. They're arachnids. They're related to spiders. They've also been called nature's dirty needles and sewers of infection. Ticks can carry many different diseases, including Lyme disease, and pass them along to you, and you might not even know you've been bitten. When they bite, they actually inject a little bit of an anesthetic, and so you often don't feel the bite, and you might not even know that you've had it. California got a record amount of rain this year, leading to a bumper crop of ticks. I was talking to your city manager last week about this, and he was saying he'd just seen a tick in his backyard. They tend to hang out in long grasses, piles of leaves on the ground, shrubs, down logs, tree trunks. They can be in your rose garden. They can be, they have been found on the underside of wooden picnic tables, and they've been found on scrub brush near beaches. So really, they can be, you know, they can be just about anyplace, and so it's important for you to be aware of that. So maybe we could go to the next slide now. There we go. So what is Lyme disease? And it's a bacterial infection carried by ticks. It can cause very debilitating symptoms throughout your body. Sometimes it causes what's called a bullseye rash, and that's the, these are two examples of that. But it might cause a rash that looks very different, or it might not cause any rash at all. It was sort of famous, you know, it sort of became, oh, well, if you had the target-looking rash, then you had Lyme disease, and otherwise you didn't. That's not the case at all. Many people with Lyme disease never saw a rash, maybe were never aware of a tick bite. So ticks can carry, it's important to know that ticks can carry multiple diseases, not just Lyme disease. Lyme disease is the most prominent one, but you can get more than one thing at a time. So you don't want to take that. And so it's important to note that Lyme can be found throughout California. Actually, you know, your county is one of the higher spots in the state, but it can be found throughout the county and the country, and in fact, the world. More than 80 countries around the world have reported Lyme disease. So it's not just an East Coast thing at all. Can you change to the next slide, please? When you first get Lyme disease, you might feel like you have the flu or COVID. During the pandemic, we heard from many patients who were thought to have COVID when it turned out to be Lyme disease, and some unlucky folks had both at the same time, which I wouldn't wish on anybody. When left unchecked, Lyme disease can affect pretty much every system of the body, heart, digestion, neurologic, and musculoskeletal. And just like you've probably heard of lung COVID, there's also lung Lyme. Unfortunately, many people suffered for years. So next slide. So what do you do if you do get bitten by a tick? Well, you get some tweezers and you pull it out very carefully, and you just try to get it all out, you know, in one piece. And we recommend that you put it in like a baggie for possible identification or testing. It's possible to send ticks to be tested, and they can tell you whether they're carrying various diseases. So some people, you know, some people want to do that, some people don't. But if you've gotten rid of the tick, you don't have that option anymore. So and then we can go on to the next slide, which is, so how do you protect yourself? And basically, it's dressed defensively. And most people, particularly when the weather's warm, would rather go out in short shorts and a sleeveless t-shirt. But it's not, it's not really wise if you're going to be exposed to ticks. You can see that this picture shows, you know, kids covered up in that clothes, that's insect shield clothing. That's a brand name. There are other brand names, but it's basically clothing that has been pre-treated with what's called permethrin, and it's basically insect repellent, you know, in your clothing. And so you don't have to put it on your skin. You can, we recommend that you do put it on the skin that is exposed. And it's also, it's also important to protect your pets, because not only for so that the pet doesn't get sick, dogs certainly can get Lyme disease, and cats a little bit less commonly, but they can get it. But also, pets can carry ticks into the house, and so then you're exposed to them additionally that way. After you've been outside, you want to check for ticks very carefully, and a good way to do that is in the shower, so you can sort of have full access to everything that needs to be looked at. And so another recommendation that actually I get, it's a recommendation that not everybody thinks is a good idea, is if you've been out in potentially tick country, to come in and put your clothes in the dryer first without washing them, because they can actually survive the water, but they don't survive being dried out. So 10 minutes in the dryer. Now, I gave that piece of advice. I was being interviewed for, it was like a horse owner's magazine or something, and they just kind of said, you know, we've been out, you know, riding horses and everything that you might get all over you, there's no way you're going to put those clothes in the dryer without washing them first. So I leave that to your personal preference, but it is a recommendation. And I think the most important recommendation about all of this is just to be aware that this is something that you should care about and you should take protection. Because I have tried, I've been involved in this kind of work for about 15 years since my daughter was quite debilitated by Lyme disease. She's better now, but it took a long time. And I was oblivious. I was, you know, ticks, I didn't know anything about them. And so I have a very different view of that now. So on my last slide, can we change to the next slide there? Just for more information, you can go to our website, and we are also on social media, Facebook, Twitter, and Instagram. And I'd be happy to answer any questions if anybody has them.
Thank you, Dorothy. Let's make it away or end the table. Answer a bagby, anything?
Well, I just wanted to thank you for the informative presentation. It's a couple of weeks too late. My husband and I just got back from a long weekend in Arcata, and we brought some hitchhikers home with us on our dog. So we had, we only had two ticks on us. We got rid of those in the car, but the dog had multiple ones. And she is on tick and flea medication, and I, you know, want to know when there will finally be one for humans. But we also, one of the things that was really effective was that we brushed her out and we used a flea comb on the dog. And that's where we got the last, like, two or three that had come along, and we didn't let her run the house until we had done that. So we commented to each other that, you know, we're really conscious of it when we're hiking in the redwoods or hiking in a hillside park, but this was at the Arcata Marsh. And I think I've only encountered a tick one or two times, like at Point Reyes or something like that, but I've never come home with 10 or 12 from a seaside visit. So yeah, you're absolutely right. So yeah, you're absolutely right. It is very prevalent right now. And, um, we, when I took a look at your presentation and the, the pyretherin, um, which is a natural, it's a flower. I've actually, uh, it's a flower extract. I've actually used the powder, um, as a, as a natural insecticide, like, you know, for ants and things like that. Um, but we decided that we're going to stock up on that. We've never really done that before. You know, before we head out to Porterfield Creek or any of the other, um, local parks, just so that we have it on hand. So thanks for the presentation and, uh, yeah, I wish you'd been here about a month ago to remind me to, um, to buy the, uh, the, the repellent. But, um, I'm on it and I would encourage families and anybody, you know, kind of going out to the river park or Porterfield Creek or, you know, to any of our, um, you know, any of our local parks to, you know, stock up before you go and spray your shoes and boots and make sure that you have. Uh, and the other thing too is because we had, um, we had taken off on a trip without thinking about it. We hadn't packed the, um, grooming comb and all the stuff for the dog. So we had to do it when we got home. So just so that you, you've got all of that with you, you know, before you go out on a, a day trip or a short trip. Have it with you and, and be prepared.
And take tweezers. Just make, you know, just have tweezers be something that you have in your, you know, in your equipment. Uh, you, you know, uh, I, I've heard a lot of presentations by scientists that have studied different things about this. And, and, uh, one fellow that's quite prominent in this, uh, said that if you can't do anything else, protect your shoes, because that's where it just, like, you know, you're, you're hiking along and a lot of times the ticks are on the ground and they get on your shoe and then they crawl up and get to you. And so you can go to.
There's a picture in the presentation of spraying the boots, which is a great idea. But yeah, most of the, the ticks we found, we have a pretty small dog. She's pretty low to the ground, but it was like on her paws and like on her face where she had probably been trying to remove them. So that's really, that's really good advice, but they are out there. And if you're just kind of not aware of it, um, yeah, you're not prepared before you go. So yeah, thanks so much for reminding us what we need to do to be prepared and protect ourselves.
Okay, thank you.
I want to thank you on behalf of all Lyme patients who had to learn the hard way for spreading awareness.
Absolutely. Any questions from the public? Seeing none and seeing none in the virtual. Dorothy, thank you for your presentation and all the great information and we appreciate you being here.
Okay, thank you.
Right, we'll move on next. F3, your presentation about the bonding capacity analysis.
Thank you, Mayor. Good, good evening, members of council, members of the community. Uh, tonight is a presentation. It's a, a presentation that contains a financial analysis for a, a, a potential ballot measure to finance, uh, a, a, a public safety or a police station. Uh, the presentation in your packet tonight is going to be, uh, provided by Greg Isom with Isom Advisors. Uh, Isom Advisors is a, a, a full service planning campaign and financial advisory firm. Uh, they were most recently responsible for, uh, guiding the school district in, um, twenty eighteen in a voter-approved initiative to fund, uh, bonds for, for school facilities. Uh, Mr. Isom very, knows very well the electorate in the community. Uh, part of the background of why we are presenting this evening, this information tonight is, uh, the, the city conducted, uh, quite a bit of work to, uh, design, um, with the intent of constructing, uh, a, a, a new police station. Uh, once that work was completed, we had a professional cost estimator prepare, uh, a cost estimate, which is included in your packet, uh, for, for that new police station. That was based on, you know, extensive programming and design of, of a new public facility. The, the costs, the estimated costs came in at about, uh, seventeen million dollars. Uh, that's in, um, uh, twenty, twenty-one dollars, uh, so it's not adjusted for inflation. Uh, when you take into account inflation and estimated construction date, the, the, the price tag just goes north of that. Uh, Mr. Isom, uh, prepared a financial analysis to determine our, our ability to support a voter-approved financing measure. He looked at both the electorate as well as, uh, potentially the amount of revenue that could be generated by a general obligation bond, uh, or a sales tax measure or a combination thereof. Uh, the, the, the point being there that the, the city does not have the financial wherewithal to finance a seventeen million dollar public facility. Uh, but we do know that our existing, uh, police station, which, you know, served as the former fire station for a number of years, uh, it doesn't meet current standards and is in dire need of replacement. Uh, so we thought it was opportune to bring this forward, uh, with possible consideration of whether there's interest in doing further survey work, uh, to evaluate the electric. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to, uh, Mr. Isom to walk us through the presentation. Uh, I know he, uh, was busy at a, uh, uh, with his, his, his schoolchildren, uh, event this evening. But, uh, he, he's going to join us and walk us through his, uh, presentation this evening. So I'd like to introduce you to Mr. Mr. Isom. We'll turn it back to you.
Great. Uh, thank you for the intro. Can everybody hear me right now? Excellent. And, and I apologize if there's weird echo. Yes, I had back to school nights. And, um, and I know that if I didn't show up to at least one of my kids, my wife would have murdered me. So I, I had achieved one of them, the first grader. She got gypped and I'll get her next year. Um, so I'm Greg Isom, uh, with Isom Advisors. Uh, I am a, uh, bond advisor. Um, kind of like a, a, a tax consultant, you know, for parcel taxes. Um, we, we've worked with, if you just go to that next page, um, on page three where it shows, um, the introduction. Um, I, I work with more municipalities, uh, in Northern California, um, than anyone that's in the state of California. Um, and especially in Sonoma County, as you can see on page three of the presentation. What, can it slide down, David? Perfect. Perfect. And I can speak louder. Um, so on this page here, this, this shows, um, the school districts that we've worked with, uh, in Sonoma County. Uh, I, I have a one hundred percent success rate when it comes to, to, to bonds. Um, and I have a ninety-five percent success rate when it comes to two-thirds parcel taxes. Um, so in Sonoma County in the last, you know, twelve, uh, twelve years, I've done about forty-five tax measures. Um, ranging in, in little bonds of two million dollars to big bonds of close to half a billion in San Rosa City Schools. Um, and as you said, you know, we, we've done work with fire protection districts, uh, park and rec districts, um, throughout the state of California. If you go to the next page, uh, this just shows our successes, um, in twenty twenty and kind of the various bond amounts. And what I take a lot of pride in, um, is that you, you're, you're going to see that it's not like I'm, I'm only, you know, working in Berkeley's of the world or the Oklands where pretty much anything can pass. Uh, we work in, you know, some of these districts are some pretty conservative districts down in Kern County, Tulare County, um, Merced County and, and kind of everyone in between. So I've worked with municipalities from Del Norte County on the Oregon border down to Imperial County, um, down on the Mexican border and everywhere in between. Uh, next page. I always say you're, you're kind of only as good as your, your last game. Um, and so as you said, we've been the leader in the state, but this shows, uh, some of the most successful measures that we had in twenty twenty-two, led the state again. And some of the ones we kind of take a little bit of pride in is you'll see where there's, there's two school districts named. Uh, these are districts where, um, we actually put two measures on the ballot at the same time. Okay? Uh, and the reason for that was because, uh, you know, the, the municipality or the school district in this case didn't necessarily have the funds to just do one measure. Uh, we had to do, uh, two measures. Um, so that's why you'll, you'll see these ones, right? Is that a typo? No, it's not a typo. That's where we, um, intentionally put two on the same ballot. Um, and those are all achieved success. Uh, just last month, I just achieved a two-thirds voter approved bond down in Monterey County, uh, at eighty-five percent support. But it kind of looks weird to just put a little one off on this page. So if you go to the next page, um, this is the actual tax base, uh, growth. Uh, sorry, skip two more, please. Right there, yes. So the city of Cloverdale, so how bonds work, um, it's just based off of the assessed value uh, of all the taxable, um, value within, within the city boundaries. Okay, so going back the last ten years, you can see that in twenty thirteen, the value of all the taxable and taxable meaning, you know, homes, um, businesses, ag, um, anything that has a taxable value that the county sends a tax bill to. Um, back in twenty thirteen was about seven hundred and fifty million. Um, it's, it's pretty much doubled. Uh, and so right now it's about one point four billion. So it's year over year, uh, percent change in the last ten years. You've been averaging about six and a half percent. Um, probably if I would have gone back a couple more years, you know, coming out of the recession, the numbers would have been a little bit lower, maybe some negative growth in, in eleven and twelve. But for the most part, you know, being in Sonoma County, um, you have very strong tax-based growth. Sonoma County is a very desirable place to live. After seeing that presentation about, you know, Cloverdale, I think I want to move to Cloverdale. Um, but as you said, so how, how bonds work, it's about the assessed value. It's about picking an appropriate tax rate. It's about the current interest rate environment, but it's also putting in projections into the future of what we think you're going to grow into. So if you go to the next one, this is how much the district, um, or I should say the city can, can achieve by doing a two-thirds general obligation bond measure. Um, I gave different tax rates of thirty, forty-five and sixty. Uh, the reason I did that is just because, you know, you, you never know what your community is going to be okay approving. Um, I also kind of just gave this a two-year window. Typically that's kind of, you know, how long it takes for things to, um, you know, when you have a project that you want to do from money in the bank to, you know, project completion. This is kind of the timeframe. Um, and so you can, you can see using a sixty-dollar tax rate, uh, it generates about twenty-three point five million. Uh, the reason I did sixty-dollar tax rate, because I believe that's what the, uh, school district of Cloverdale did. Um, and while they didn't achieve two-thirds, they were above sixty percent. Um, so I think that's just a good starting point to, to give you the city an idea on how much a local bond can generate. You can see I'm only using three and a half percent. So in, in that little box, in the kind of fine print, you can see it says assumes AB growth of three and a half percent in thirty-year bond terms. You know, if I were to tweak that percent to go to four percent, uh, your sixty-dollar tax rate bond could probably jump to, you know, twenty-six million dollars. Okay? If, if we said, you know, there's maybe a couple of different facility projects that we want to do besides the police station. Um, if we're going to do a bond, that, that's, that's go for it as opposed to just, you know, taking little nibbles out of the apple. Let's, let's take a big bite. You know, maybe we throw on a series B bond in twenty twenty-nine and that would generate, you know, an extra five million dollars. And now maybe you're looking at a bond of, of thirty million dollars at the sixty-dollar tax rate. Okay, so you can kind of see that there's lots of options when it comes to the city on what they want to achieve um, in regards to different variable tax rates, the structure of the bond, the timing of the bond. Um, you know, pretty much what the voters do when they approve a bond measure is they are giving you the authority to sell up to a certain amount of bonds, but they don't dictate, um, when you sell them and how you sell them. So they approve a tax rate, they approve a bond amount, and then it's up to you guys to, to determine when you want to sell them and how you want to sell them. And a lot of that's just based off of, you know, how quickly can you get your facility projects done? Okay, next page. So another option that exists, um, for cities, you know, going to the voters is a sales tax measure. Um, and so, you know, that's where you see something like, oh, well, we raise it by a quarter percent. How much will that generate? Okay? So right now you guys, approximately, you know, receive approximately about a million dollars in the Bradley Burn sales tax, uh, distributions. Um, and that means you, you approximately, you know, it's not going to be perfect until we run like a real, real, you know, uh, excellent analysis, but quick and dirty. You get about two hundred and fifty grand, um, for every quarter, uh, percent. Okay? And so what I put here in this box is how much could you generate if you were to do a, um, sales tax measure? In a sales tax measure, you only need, you know, pretty much fifty percent plus one, while the Geo bond requires a two-thirds vote. Okay? And so I gave you different options because you can actually go up to, um, three-quarter percent, uh, extra right now. Um, that's kind of the, the limit that the state gives you guys. But as you can kind of see, uh, kind of in that red, it shows you how much you would be able to generate with, with each quarter, uh, percent. So you can see, you know, if we just said let's do a quarter, you could generate about three point four million dollars with the twenty-year financing. If we said let's go, uh, you know, a half percent, six point nine million, point seven five percent, ten point five million. You know, you could actually, you know, instead of going twenty years, you could do a thirty-year term. Um, and you know, that would generate, you know, closer to thirteen million dollars. Um, so as I said, th- th- these are, these are two options that exist for, for, um, cities when they want to go to the voters. And so what I'm proposing, um, you know, when, when I've spoken to, you know, to, uh, the staff there is maybe consider doing both. And so how do we know if both would work? Is it going to flop in our face? Um, and that's what, you know, I take a look at your voter demographics. So if you, um, jump ahead two pages. So voter demographics, okay? At the end of the day, while you guys may want to do something, um, if your voters don't want to do it, well, you know, problem solved, right? So right now you guys have about fifty-four hundred total voters, uh, the majority of whom are, are Democrats, fifty-two percent. You know, it says eighty-nine percent vote by mail. Those, those are the voters who, who actually asked to be a permanent absentee, even though the state of California gives everyone a vote by mail ballot. You know, you still have a bunch of people that go vote at the polls. Okay? It's, it's a lesser amount now. So about eleven percent are the ones that actually show up to the polls. Uh, and you can see that, you know, on the right-hand side, the voter age demographics, you have a little bit of an older age demographic, um, when it comes to tax measures. You know, with the Del Webb community, um, you know, that's, that's represented by a large percent there. But you, you know, you actually have, shockingly, a lot of younger voters too. Like if you look at West County, you know, Sebastopol, Gernville, um, Marillo, you know, parts of San Rosa, um, you know, they're older, but that yellow slice of fifty-five to sixty-four is actually a, a bigger chunk as well. Um, and so you, you have decent demographics when it comes to going to the voters. Okay? Um, it's just a matter of finding out what is the appropriate time and what is the appropriate amount and the appropriate project. So if we turn, um, another two pages, so to voter turnout. Voter turnout, um, is an extremely important page because typically when you go to voters, there are good dates and there are bad dates, uh, when you want to ask them for money. Okay? Historically, uh, you know, cities, school districts, park and rec districts, even the state of California, um, has decided that they, for the most part, they don't want to do tax measures, um, in primary elections because the odds, or I should say the percent shows that, um, you have a greater chance of success. Like when you take a look at statewide, so you know, statewide, tax measures normally are like in a November general election, uh, you know, anywhere from eighty to ninety percent. You know, when you go to a presidential primary election, you're looking, you know, closer to seventy-five, you know, seventy to eighty percent. And then when you go to the primaries, um, for gubernatorial, you know, those aren't normally, you know, the hot measures or the hot election dates to choose. Um, and that's where you sometimes end up at, you know, fifty to sixty-five percent, um, passage rate for tax measures. So right here, this is, this is how often your voters come out to vote. Okay? Uh, and you'll see November of twenty twenty, the last major election date, you guys had over eighty percent turnout, which is, which is quite high. You know, the November of twenty twenty-two, you know, November gubernatorial, I don't remember. I don't think anybody here remembers what they voted on, uh, last November. You know, I, I think, you know, we all know it's like, okay, either voted for the governor for, is Newsom or someone else. I don't even know who that person was and I bet you most of us probably don't either. Um, and there's a reason for that. Uh, as I said, so when it comes to when is the best time, um, for your city to pass a measure, uh, my answer to you is the best time is, is when you're going to win. Right? And you're going to say, well, nice response, Greg. But honestly, that's the best time to go. And so there's a process that we do that gives us pretty much a ninety to ninety-five percent chance, um, of me recommending you success on election day. So if you go to the last timeline, I think it's in two pages. Next steps. So here's a timeline for March of twenty twenty-four. Okay, so the, the state of California voted, um, uh, you know, the legislators to, to move the March or the presidential primary to March. It used to be in June, uh, for like the last couple of election cycles. And then they moved it permanently to March. Um, and you can kind of see what the steps are in order to be successful. So first one, you can see I say update needs this master plan. This is kind of like, okay, you got your police station. Are there any other projects that you guys would like to do? And so if there's a bunch of projects, um, that would like to get done, well, that's where we would like to know what that is. Because if you just go to the voters and say, we're going to do one project, I can almost guarantee you it's probably going to be unsuccessful. What's, what, what makes cities and park and rec districts successful is when you have multiple projects so that that voter is taking, they say, hey, you know, I may not be the biggest fan of the police station. I'm probably for it, but if I know I'm going to get, you know, new roads and if I know I'm going to get, you know, X, Y, Z, yeah, you can have my vote. Okay? So it's a matter of, of kind of building up, uh, a, a list of winner projects. Okay? Um, we have the meeting where we say exploring the feasibility of a bond or a tax measure. Uh, the reason why it's in bold and in quotation says exploring, because in my opinion, that's all that you're really doing. Okay? I, I, I never like it when municipalities say, we are going to do a tax measure. When I say, well, slow, slow down there, partner. I always recommend, let's explore whether a tax measure is going to win. Okay? And by exploring, first thing right out of the gate that I do is, is conduct a voter opinion survey. And the reason why this And the reason why the survey is important is because that that is how the average community member in Cloverdale feels about a tax measure. But we also don't just ask questions about a tax measure. What we want to find out is, how do voters feel about you guys? How do they feel about, you know, just general matters in Cloverdale? Okay? Um, how do they feel about the projects? How do they feel about the tax rates? And the reason we ask all these questions is because, you know, we have a pretty good idea on on how you would compare to what we'd say is is a normal city or a normal school when asked the same questions. Okay, you know, so we 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 compare and contrast all these surveys that we do. And we kind of group and we say, hey, if you if your voters are feeling okay about something, you kind of get put in this box here on the left. If something is off, it it's gonna show, and I always give this example. You know, when we did a survey for Healdsburg uh back in twenty twelve, what we found out was, um, we asked the question, you know, do you do you agree or disagree that the school district has done a good job of uh managing its bond money? Or like managing its finances? And it came back like super negative. And the reason why that was unique is because, you know, they had been in the paper for last, you know, five years, threats of strikes. This would be, this was before they were a basic eight school district where they got, you know, more property tax money. Uh, they did weren't relying on the state. And so what we had to do is we had to kind of start branding the district. Um, you know, in 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 the next eight months to to make the community realize, hey, they're actually doing a great job. But it was the perception that it was negative. Okay? And so the purpose of the survey is to find out, um, what makes your community tick. Okay? And what we want to know is, what is a, what is appropriate to them? Are they open to doing a bond? Are they open to doing a sales tax measure? Are they open to the sixty dollar tax rate? Does it have to be forty dollars? Are they open to the corporate? We want to ask all these questions. Okay? And then we present these survey results to the board and and or to the kind of council. So I keep saying board man, because I'm used to making this presentation for Cloverdale uh, school district. And so, um, the reason why we do the survey and and how we conduct it, I know this question is gonna get asked, is how do we conduct the survey? We don't just call every single community member within your city. We kind of give the survey people um a a barometer, or I should say like a group of voters who match the demographics of who is going to show up on that specific election date. So if you are somebody who has never voted before, the odds are very high that you are not gonna get called. Because because frankly, I I don't care that much about your opinion, because you're not gonna vote on a measure anyways. So we we always want to call the high propensity uh voters. Uh, so you know, if you have fifty percent of your voters are Democrats, well, fifty percent of the of Democrats are gonna be called for the survey. If thirty percent are Republicans, thirty percent are gonna are going to get called. If a thirty year voters are are senior citizens, a thirty year voters, you know, or I should say, uh, of senior citizens are going to take the survey, because we want to have an extremely accurate um, you know, response to the survey so that I can make a recommendation to you guys to say, hey, great news, guys, your community wants to do this. Bad news is, they don't want to support this tax rate, so we're gonna have to trim some of the fat off of what your project list is. Okay? Assuming that your survey looks positive, um, we then kind of speak to some of the key people in town. So some of the, you know, supervisor, uh, Chamber of Commerce, some, you know, key stakeholders, key staff members, key community groups. Um, and say, hey, are you open to this idea or not? And we actually use the survey um and say, uh, hey, you know what, the average community member said yes. What are your thoughts on this? We get their feedback. And so then ultimately, what gets brought back to you, the city council, is something that your community said that they're willing to support. You know, it takes a little bit of the political heat off of you when you have a voter opinion survey that says it's positive, and you have the key stakeholders that say it's positive. That's when you bring your your actual measure um and and you would vote on something. Okay? If something says no, if something, the survey comes back negative, or some of the key stakeholders say now is not the time, well, then we don't go on March and we punt and go in November. Okay? Um, you know, if if something says, hey, we don't want to have both on the ballot at the same time, but let's chop, you know, spread, you know, put one on March, one in November. Well, that's something that we need to kind of analyze the data, analyze the, you know, the response from from your community. And then, as I said, make recommendations to you guys. But as I said, this is all following a March timeline. I don't know what your community is going to say. I have an idea. Um, but I I don't know one hundred percent. And that's what, as I said, you know, e- every community is different, and that's true. Um, and I and I would be curious to see what the survey says, so I can make those recommendations, say full speed in March, or, you know, yellow light, let's slow down and 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 look towards November. Or, you know, it's happened before where the survey came back extremely negative. I said, hey, guys, pull the plug, there's nothing left to do. Your community says absolutely not. We gotta find a different way to fund these projects that you want. That is my presentation. I'm open to any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you, Greg. Let's work our way around the table. Councilmember Bagby, wanna go first? Okay. Councilmember Wheeler? A good thing about uh, Mr. Eisen, we've worked together in two thousand ten and two thousand eighteen or sixteen.
Sixteen.
And sixteen. And uh, he's been very successful for Cloverdale. He does a very thorough job. And he actually shut me down one time when I wanted to do a bond, and the survey came back and he said, you're nuts, don't do it. So we listened, and and things worked out, because we have a very supportive community. But to know that he also has our back, he he knows our our community about as well as we do. So it's good to have him on board and wanting to help out. Comes from Bagby? Anything yet, or am I open to public? Okay. I'll open up to the public. Any anyone have any questions? Hands, I don't see any hands on the virtual side. Okay. We're running out of opportunities. So the reason, one of the main reasons like uh, Council, uh, David Kelly stated was our police department is pretty dilapidated. It's not safe for earthquakes. It's uh, they've tried to do different things inside, and they've been told no, because it's unsafe. And so that's one of many projects that we want to try to uh accomplish here in the city. That's just the higher ticket item. But there's uh many things we've talked about with through the parks and rec. We've thrown a lot of things around the table at the finance department uh committee with you know, skate parks and more money to help senior seniors and and county programs and community centers and different things. So it's not just one ticket item. There's a lot of, a lot of um, a lot of things that would help our community, but we don't have the money here unless we turn to our our voters or we turn to our sales tax, and it's the only way to do it. You look at our schools and what we've accomplished there. Uh, you'd never know that Cloverdale came up with about, oh, I think we're in almost at the sixty million mark, right? Between the two bonds of of accomplishments in classrooms and fields and uh, computers and efficiency and everything that we've done. So. You ready? Awesome.
Yeah, I just, you know, I think it's important to to stress that, you know, we're receiving the presentation and it contained a lot of really valuable information. And some of it, you know, if we've um, worked on, you know, campaigns or measures and at the city or, you know, some of our other regional boards, it's it's really great to get a refresher, because um, you you it's twenty, yeah, thinking about twenty twenty four, it's not too it's it's, we're almost, we're almost late. So um, it's it's very timely that we're getting this presentation now. But, you know, to tonight, what we're considering is we're receiving the presentation and providing feedback and direction. So um, a couple of things really um stood out, which I always, you know, enjoy a a reminder and a primer on um, how bonds work. Um, and 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 we kind of, you know, forget about, um, sometimes in smaller cities and, you know, smaller municipalities, we forget about those uh, series B bonds, that those are, you know, a possibility as well. So we may not, we don't have to get the whole um, you know, we don't have to get the whole thing all all at once to the voters. But I think that it 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 was, this was, the presentation was a really really good reminder. We need to be very, very clear on what we want this facility to be like. And I think that, you know, when I look back at all of the work that was done to kind of complete the the current plan that we had that was based in twenty twenty one, um, I want to make darn sure that any plan that we have for a new facility is consistent with our current policing practices. Um, and the mayor is absolutely right. The the facility that we have now, it is, it is substandard, it is unsafe, and we know from twenty seventeen and twenty nineteen, it's not a matter of if there's going to be another emergency where we will be on our own. You know, we heard it from um, from Becky and us earlier, we will be cut off and we will be on our own. Um, it's only a matter of time. And so this is really an urgent need. And I and I I think that the community understands that. And, you know, those of us who are here and and lived through that know that we have to have a facility where um, our police department can operate safely and professionally. Um, the second thing is that the that was really helpful about the presentation is understanding that it probably needs to be, um, we need to look at our other infrastructure projects, because I think we probably have other uh, well, and I don't think, I know, we have items on our capital improvement project that are um just as urgent as um, you know, things like water and sewer and 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 other things that are just as urgent as having to have, having to be able to have a a functional police department, you know, during, and a a building for operations to work out of. Um, the other thing that's been um very clear is that we have other community needs, you know, for, you know, um, for um, community classrooms, community education, for for um for county services to be able to come here, for places like La Familia Sanaa and Doister Comunita to do some of their services. Those aren't always compatible with, and I, you know, actually just was reminded uh talking to Jade Wymouth today is that um, a lot of our population is not going to be comfortable going to meetings or um say, or, you know, a community center that's adjacent to a police station or a fire department. They're just not, because of the the the, you know, their experience from their home countries coming here, there's a distrust often of law enforcement. And it's great for cities to have a place that's more neutral ground to do that essential outreach to our entire community. So that's just some, those are all of the things I think that we need to look at very broadly. And we have to have a very clear plan, not just say, oh, we're gonna either buy a piece of property or we have big plans to do something. We need to be very clear about what the needs are of the facility that we're we're looking to um, to to put up as well as, you know, other um, projects that could balance that with and be attractive to the 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 largest number of voters. So um, that was, so my, if if um, if I were providing direction to staff, I'd say let's go ahead and move this forward and have and come up with a very clear plan of what we would want to be able to go out to the voters with. And um, you know, and send it to either a subcommittee or an ad hoc, something like that. But we just, we definitely need to get the ball rolling on this. And sooner rather than later.
I was just gonna say on that, uh, I think the demographic of the voters around here is, I, you know, Cloverdale has heard, I think, last three or four years or or that we need a new police station, we're looking at a new police station, we're gonna get a new police station. So I don't know if the voters have kicked in, they know there's a design out there. And then it kind of stays right there and it stalls. So I think what to convince the voters of Cloverdale, we're gonna have to come up like, like Councilmember Bagby said, we have to have a solid plan, solid direction, and then really go for this thing and add in some other stuff. So so we can gain the trust back of the voters and say, hey, if they, if they're gonna approve this, or they're gonna and look at this this time, it's gonna happen. We're gonna actually have a new police station. You know, and and that's just Cloverdale, and I'm gonna throw in there, same thing, you know, they've heard since I've been here, I've been here six years, I've heard Alexander Valley Healthcare. I know that's that's starting to go, and I know things takes time, but people always see, they see a new sign. Okay, when's that gonna go in? You don't have a quite the answer for them. So I think we need to gain the trust back of Cloverdale and say, yes, this is gonna happen. We're going for it. We're going both feet in and let's make magic happen here. So anyway.
Media to help get the word out that our police station isn't safe. If there's an earthquake, the last thing we want is our police to be lost in an earthquake or damaged or anything to go on with that building to keep them from being able to serve us during an emergency. So I think we should, you know, be really honest and talk to the media and say, we have these needs and this is what we're thinking of doing and why.
I'll just, can I just add, do you mind? Um, our city hall is in no better shape. It just doesn't have to be, happen to be sitting on the creek. It's adjacent to the police department sitting on the creek. And and I think that that's why we we really need to assess our, you know, our existing capital improvement project um, in light of of this. The other thing to kind of keep aware of, it's probably a little early days, is that I think all people on council and staff are cer- certainly aware, there is a lot of stuff floating about um other, about regional sales taxes. And so that's just, that's something that we'll have to, you know, carefully, carefully consider. There's gonna be a very crowded ballots in the next uh, two elections.
So I I'm gathering that we want to move forward with the survey. Do we feel that we should bring it to the finance committee at the next meeting and make a list?
I'd like to hear what city manager, how we might want to proceed.
With your permission, Mayor? Okay. Um, a- absolutely, I would recommend that uh, thi- this matter be referred to the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee. It's scheduled for June fifth, so it's just a little less than a week and a half away uh to uh finalize a list of projects that we can provide to Mr. Eisen to include and uh, add to a a a voter survey. Uh, what I hear from council tonight is support for moving forward with a key aspect of the scope of work is the survey work. Uh, we we will need to bring back to council a budget adjustment to uh, to cover the cost of that work. Um, but again, I I I hear council support for that. So uh, i- if you agree, we'll bring that back at your next council meeting on on June fourteenth. Uh, that way we have budget to conduct the survey work. But in the meantime, uh, staff can develop a a a list that we bring to the Finance Admin and Police Subcommittee on June fifth uh, for your consideration that then can be provided to Mr. Eisen as he develops, develops uh, a a voter, a voter survey. Uh, and and, you know, obviously, the the next step would be to you know, go ahead and proceed with the actual survey work.
Perfect, thank you. So in in light of Greg's uh position, let's let him get back to his kids' back to school night. And so we can, you have good direction, we can move forward. Great presentation, Greg. Thank you. And we will talk to you on the fifth. Anything else for us before you go?
No, back to school night's over, so my wife's just waiting outside the car for this meeting to end. So thank you. There. Thank you, everybody. Have a good night.
All right. Moving on, let's get a computer ready here. All right, moving on. G consent calendar. All items under the consent calendar will be considered together by one action of the city council, unless any council member or a member of the public requests an item be removed and considered separately. Are there any items that we want to poll? Seeing none and seeing none.
Move the consent calendar.
Okay, does we have a motion?
Second.
And a second. You ready?
Thank you, Mayor. I'll go with the motioner and the second or first councilmember, Bagby.
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan Stern?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
With uh Vice Mayor Walter being absent.
Anybody need a? Yeah. You want five? Okay. We'll take five and then we'll get into the public hearing. Quick break, we're moving on to public hearings. H1, pre-zoning approximately 9.27 acres of developed land commonly known as the Six Acres Annexation Area. APNs 116-290-001 to 009, 011 to 015, 017, 019 to 022, 024. 116-310-001 to the two-family residential R2 zoning district. Kevin. End of report.
Mayor, councilmembers, this is the public hearing for the proposed zoning ordinance to pre-zone the Six Acres area as the mayor indicated, 9.27 acres. This is the next step, and we've been working on this for a long time, but this is, I think, a pretty big milestone in the process, so we're happy about that. There, just a little bit of, yeah, Mike, can you go to the next slide? Sorry. So there's 21 parcels in there, excuse me, yeah, 21 parcels, all of them developed except for one with single-family residences. The ordinance would establish the pre-zoning of R2 per our zoning code section. This is one of the necessary steps in this process. The proposed zoning is consistent with the general plan, land use designation of two-family residential. And for those who don't know, here's the project location. On the north is Lyle Lane, sorry, Mike, to the west, South Cloverdale Boulevard, and then El Rancho Drive to the south. So that's, those are the parcels proposed for this annexation. Just a quick background, they are having trouble with their water system, as we all know. The real solution here is for them to get city sewer and water service. They were successful in receiving a grant from the California State Water Resources Board Division of Drinking Water, who's paying for a lot of having the infrastructure, the sewer, the hookup fees, and pretty much, we're hoping, all of it. We have, we had a pre-annexation agreement that was before the council a couple of years ago, that kind of outlined the expectations of the annexation. We're currently reviewing the full annexation agreement, which is pretty much modeled after the pre-annexation agreement. We hope to bring that forward to council in the next couple of meetings. The Planning Commission looked at this issue and adopted a resolution recommending approval of the ordinance at their May 2nd meeting, and this is a required step in the process, which the next step is to go on to LAFCO, which is Sonoma County, the annexations. Here you can just see the project area and the consistency with the general plan, the zoning will be R2. Sorry, Mike, I'm three slides ahead of you. So, that's it for the presentation. Our recommendation is that you introduce first reading by title only the ordinance, and we're, I know there's a lot of folks here from Six Acres who may want to say something, but again, this is the next step in a long process, and we're happy to bring this forward and move this project along.
Thank you, Kevin. Any questions or comments from the council first? Anyone in the audience like to make any public, any comments? Oh, I thought we could all get up and speak on this. I think this is a, it's about time. I think they, everyone's done their homework, we've worked, you guys have worked hard for years, and so I think it's time. If there's no other comments, I'll close public comment and see if anybody has a motion.
Yeah, I'll introduce for first reading by title only of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City of Cloverdale Amending Title 18, Zoning of the City Municipal Code, Pre-Zoning Certain Properties Containing Approximately 9.27 Plus or Minus Acres of Developed Land Commonly Known As Six Acres Annexation Area." APNs, okay, it's for you, Jose. APNs 116-290-001 to, dash, 009, dash, 011 to, dash, 015, dash, 17, dash, 019 to, dash, 022, dash, 24. 116-310-001 to the two-family residential or R2 zoning district.
We have a second?
Second.
Perfect.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
Aye.
Mayor Lance?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walters?
Passes 40. I want to thank everyone from Six Acres for working so hard to make this happen. So, you guys did a good job.
A quick question, Mayor, I just wondered if we know how long it'll take to get on the LAFCO docket?
We're currently preparing the LAFCO application on behalf of Six Acres, and so we need to clarify some of the roles for their engineers in terms of making exhibit for us. So I don't have a great answer, but hopefully, maybe David has more information, but pretty soon.
Well, and I just want to add that we, tonight, obviously, council supported introduction by first reading, we have to bring back second reading, so we'll do that, plan, plan to bring back the second reading at your June 14th council meeting. Likewise, we are coordinating on the annexation agreement, which will spell out just some additional details related to annexation that were not covered in the pre-annexation agreement. Our goal is to bring that back concurrently with second reading, and during that timeframe, staff is working on all the components for the application to LAFCO. The consultant, GHD, that was hired by the state to prepare the improvement plans, has indicated that, part of the reason this takes so long is the state funding mechanism that is funding this effort has a lot of approval processes that go along with it. And the, the, GHD currently has a scope amendment into the state to prepare the exhibits that LAFCO require, so there's some, some technical legal exhibits that ultimately have to be prepared to support the annexation application. So we're, we're kind, we're working in conjunction with the, the design team that was selected to, to do the improvement plans, to coordinate with on the, on our, on our role of preparing the annexation application. So, we're, our goal is to move it forward as quickly as we can, but there, there are some, some processes that we're working through just to make sure we have all the pieces in place.
That we're looking at next fall at the earliest, in other words, that would be the earliest.
Well, ideally, we, it's sooner, but, you know, the goal is to get, get the application in once it's been supported and approved by council.
Jose, as a public hearing, did I meet the requirements with, do I need to document times, add more time for the public hearing portion to give them more time?
No, Mayor, as long as you opened it up for the public hearing, there were no, for the record, there were nobody, no speakers, that's all we needed to be closed the public hearing.
Did you get times or do you need it?
I did, you opened and closed at 7:54.
Thank you. All right, good to go. Moving on to H2, introduction and first reading on an ordinance amending sections of the Cloverdale Municipal Code in order to improve the general community and residents' quality of life by ensuring conformity with state law and consistency between the CMC and general plan.
Thank you, Mayor, councilmembers. This is the public hearing for a number of proposed zoning amendments and also code amendments. These are really a combination of a few things, there's housekeeping items, there's, we're changing some of our zoning to conform with a lot of the housing state laws that we've been talking about over the last few years, and some of those have been recommended from our housing element consultant. So, Mike, I don't know if you can, I'll go through this as quick as I can, so we can just go to the next slide. You got it. Next slide, please. So the first one's pretty simple, this was asked for from the PD. We have all-around-town 20-minute parking signs as long, as long as, and, excuse me, along with green painted curbs that are 20 minutes, but in the code it says 24 minutes, so this is a simple change from 24 to 20, and that's going to help them enforce that better. Okay, number, next slide. This one comes out of SB 9, which again is one of the ones we've been talking about for quite a bit of time here. Right now, the zoning ordinance requires, if someone wants to put two houses on one lot, a major design review by the Planning Commission. So even like this duplex here would have to go all the way to the Planning Commission and make findings, and that really is not the intent of SB 9, which is kind of telling us we need to increase that. So what we're proposing here is, anyone proposing to put five units on one lot would require a major design review. So the duplex would be able to go through building permit, just the regular process. Next slide. So we're hearing a lot about the findings that we have to make and the objective versus non-objective standards. So things like the general appearance of a project is in keeping with the character of the neighborhood, that's kind of out now because it's hard to quantify that, and how do we really impose that on somebody, and if there's a lot of opinion that could be entered into that. So this is one of probably a few changes we'll be making, but this was one that was flagged by the HCD reviewer of our housing element, so we kind of need to get this one done. And really, it just strikes that language out, the, the, kind of the subjective standards, like it fits in with the neighborhood. So these, when we approve a design review, we make findings, these are the findings that says, hey, the project is consistent with the general plan, it, you know, it meets our design standards because it has the correct setbacks, things like that, that's what we're sticking to, we have to get rid of this ambiguous language. So that's that one, Mike. This one is a result of Senate Bill 324 pertaining to large family daycares. The state has told us that we can't prohibit or have any development review or standards for large family daycares in residential neighborhoods, and this includes up to 14 children. So currently in our zoning ordinance, we have things like fences, playground, play areas, things like that, we're proposing to strike all of that. In some cases, it requires either a plot plan review, which is something that I have the ability to approve as long as it makes the standards. I also have the ability to bring it to Planning Commission if I don't want, if I feel like it's a heavier item. So we're going to eliminate the plot plan review. In some cases, it requires a use permit. I don't know that we have a lot of choice on this one. And just so you know, the state does have its own permitting system for large family daycares where they do inspections and they require fire things, and, you know, the building permits all would still apply, it's just we don't have kind of this discretionary action that we can take to deny these. Okay, next slide. So this one really comes out of something that happened in SB 2 in 2008, where we have to allow an emergency shelter in one of our zonings by right, meaning there's not a discretionary decision by the Planning Commission or the council whether it's good for that neighborhood. We're proposing here, one of the caveats to that is the zoning that we choose has to already allow for residential uses. We do allow for residential uses in all of our commercial districts, so they would be available. What we've proposed here and the Planning Commission agreed with us was to select TOD zoning for a possible location for a shelter by right. So it's currently a plot plan review, which is not a huge barrier to it, this would even lessen that barrier to allowed by right. Again, this is something that has been on the books for a long time, they did some recent amendments to the law that sort of clarified, and one of those things is that there has to be a residential use already allowed in that zone that we select. So again, we're suggesting TOD on that one. Next one. So this is related to allowing residential in commercial. Currently, you can propose residential in the general commercial with a use permit. This is the only zone that we have in commercial that requires the use permit level, the rest are either permitted or a plot plan. What we're suggesting here is that we allow residential in a general commercial zone with a plot plan. So that still requires a review, it's a staff-level review, so all zoning would apply, setbacks, parking, all of those types of things, it would just be done at the staff level. And again, in the zoning ordinance, if it's a plot plan and the planning director decides that it needs to go to Planning Commission, that's within the discretion of that. So that's that one, number seven. Next one, Mike? This is number seven. So we've actually, this one kind of came out of the community, and this is not really one that's rooted in, in state law or requirement, but we've been getting a lot of inquiries about doing live work in commercial zones. The, the new owner of the nursery down by Ace Hardware was wondering if they could put a small apartment in the back. Actually, the answer now is no. Someone behind Plank wanted to put a small apartment. So what this would do is allow for what we call live work in all the commercial zones with a plot plan. So again, there would be a review of it. We do have live work standards in the zoning already, requires, you know, fire code separation, parking, lot coverage, all those things are in place, so if someone wanted to do a live work unit, they would go through that scrutiny to see if it met the standards, but it would be allowed. Okay, next one. So this one, we have a lot of plan developments in town, and those are good for allowing developers to have flexibility in what they develop. We have Clover Springs is one, and there's, there's a number of them. What this proposes is, right now, there's a kind of a hard rule that the rear setback on, in a plan development is 20 feet, even though we've got several plan developments in town that have less than 20 feet, Clover Springs being the example, there's a few others. So this is not one that the state is really asking us to do, we're just trying to clean it up and get it consistent with what's out there and allow for future plan developments to, you know, have the ability to reduce the rear yard setback and not require the 20. The plan development is, is a higher level of scrutiny, so that all goes to the city council with the Planning Commission recommendation, so we really take a hard look at, you know, everything they're proposing within the plan development and make sure it all makes sense. So this is one that we've noticed a lot of the So this is one that we've noticed a lot of the plan developments have less than 20 feet. It requires 20 feet, so there's just kind of a cleanup item. And the last one is number nine. Mike, can we go to the next one? And this is really just, the building code in 2019 said that you can go do a seven-foot fence without a building permit, and we still have a six-foot requirement in the zoning ordinance. So this would just bring it into the conformance with the building code of, of 2019. So it would allow up to seven-foot fences, which people generally request. So last slide here is just, this is the first reading. Just like the previous item, we would bring it back on consent, and if there's support for it for the second reading, it would go into effect 30 days after that. Some of those items are a little more urgent just because the housing element won't get adopted until we conduct a couple of those, and those were the ones with the, the homeless shelter. So that's, that's the end of my report.
Thank you, Kevin. Who wants to go first?
I think most of this is pretty pro forma, and I really, yeah, support it, like good work from staff on what we are required to do on the state, and then also just sort of look at, especially the, the, the PUDs, it's like we're already making exceptions there. And I think that with our, with our low water goals and our other goals of, it just, it's, it's in line with, you know, what we're already doing. So I think good work on identifying what we urgently are required to do by the state, but also just some of the cleanup work. And it's, it's just a, a great time saving, so thanks for your hard work on this.
Just a couple of questions on these, and I'm, I think I know the answers on all of them, but I want to make sure. So under the one, there's a couple, this is the first one, is the conformity to the design, and it talked about the general appearance of proposal and keeping with the character of the neighborhood. The way it's written is basically, and we've talked about it in other meetings, that, you know, you can't put a three-story modern building next in a 100-year-old neighborhood in between two houses. That was the kind of the purpose of this, because it lowers the values of those times, types of homes. You know, I might be a bad example, but it's, you know, it's one of those deals that it doesn't fit, it stand out. Would we have any control over that?
We would. So it, really, the whole point of this is just to, to get rid of the nebulous language. We can still say the maximum height is 30 feet, the setback is this, all of those quantifiable things that have a real specific direction to a developer, a window every 10 feet, whatever those are, those are fine, it's just, we can't say, it doesn't fit in with the neighborhood and don't really define that.
And the last one was the 15 feet versus 20. I know ADUs can do five feet at this point. So is there a height restriction that we could worry about when you hit 15 feet and you have a swimming, swimming pool in the neighbor's yard? Now you're getting really close, starting to look over, you know what I mean? It's, it starts to get uncomfortable. So is this going to start compressing our tract homes and things that people want to build?
Is this the plan development?
This is the, the second to last one you did where it was the setbacks, the 20-yard, the 20-foot, the 15-foot?
Yeah, so this would apply to the, the plan developments. So those are the developments that they're really, we ask the developer to bring in a very complete plan of what the subdivision's going to lay out, you know, are there windows looking into the neighbors? We get into real high level of scrutiny on those types of projects. So this would just allow them to reduce that setback, but we have the ability, again, to, you know, impose or, you know, require them to design it in a way that addresses that. So the, kind of the trade-off for the plan development is where we expect a higher quality of design. In exchange for that, you know, you can kind of tell us what your setbacks are and how the, how the project works together as a whole.
Thank you. And I know most of these are things we have to do, we don't have a choice. Let's open it, I'm sorry.
Just, sorry, just, I have one comment, and I'll just say, and I appreciate your comment about the design review issue, but I'll just point out that we had an opportunity to do that in Cloverdale. And in my neighborhood, it's a perfect example, we didn't do it. I mean, we, we have, you know, homes that date back to when they were railroad housing. And, I mean, I, I love my neighbors in the duplexes and the apartments, but they were, they plopped down these just, you know, architecturally, I just, houses that were not consistent with the character of the neighborhood.
Right.
You know, so we had an opportunity to do it, and we, we really, we didn't. So, you know, in, in my neighborhood and in other kind of more historic neighborhoods too, we have, we have some real clashes that we're just sort of, that we're stuck with because we actually probably could have said, hey, you know what, you know, go ahead and put a duplex there, but it's got to blend in with the neighborhood a little bit more architecturally, go ahead and put a multifamily unit in there. But, you know, they're just basically plopped down boxes, you know? And so I, that's why I kind of don't have a big problem with the, especially with, with that particular item and with their, with the comments from, from HCD is because this community had an opportunity to do that in some historic neighborhoods and we didn't do it. So it's not a big, it's not a big loss. I, I wish we had actually been a little bit more critical of some of the modern buildings that came in, in some very unfortunate architectural periods and, you know, kind of just distract from the character of the neighborhood. But now here we are. So, yeah, and, and for that, I don't really, I don't really, really have a problem with that one. And then just, you know, having visited the lovely homes at, at Clover Springs, because I actually do have fancy friends there, and they really appreciate not having to, not having to have a huge yard to maintain because it is a retirement community, and so theoretically they don't have a lot of kids in their yards all the time. And I think that they've been done very well. I think it's an example of a, a planned community that was designed very well to protect people's privacy and have adequate setbacks, but then also not have like a lot of requirement for a water-intensive yard or yard that, you know, maybe retired people through their choice don't, don't want to have to keep up. So, you know, that's why I, I think that's a good, very good housekeeping, and I'm, I'm very happy with the results.
I'll open up to the public. Anyone who want to make any comments, please come forward. Although we've all learned who you are, please state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm.
Ooh.
I'm Tepper Jack, and I, I do live in one of these historical neighborhoods, and I am concerned about the quality of design. And I, I really feel like even if we've made those mistakes in the past, let's not let more of that happen, you know, because I just think it could be a really slippery slope where we lose a lot more character and the neighborhoods really start to look worse. So, you know, I, I liked your question about that, you know, that one issue, and I, I don't really feel like you answered that part of the question. I, I, I want to include some language like that or at least like revisit that.
So I guess the question would be, do we have some control over what is being built? And we can say it based upon a square box versus a 100-year-old craftsman home?
We do. I mean, we still have most of our controls. We have the setbacks, we have the lock coverage, we have all of those things. We just can't say to a developer, you know, it doesn't fit in or, you know, it's not in conformance with the neighborhood. So it's just those really, it, this is, I mean, we're not bringing this, this is the state law, really doing our objective standards where it has to be very exact, 10 feet from the property line, building can be this tall, windows here, things like that. It's just we can't say it doesn't fit in with the character and those kinds of things.
So then with that, it says, the proposal will not be detrimental to the health, safety, comfort, and general welfare of the persons residing or working. So the general welfare, that's, is it, are you, are you, is it detrimental to someone else? Yeah, thank you, Jose. Is it detrimental to someone that has a, let's say, a million-dollar Victorian, and you put in a quadplex that's shaped like a Christmas present?
I, I think for there, and I think what Kevin was trying to mention was, really what we should be focused on as well are the design guidelines, the actual guidelines that they have to follow. What state law was trying to, to get rid of or is telling us to get rid of is more of that just very, and, kind of the, the, more of the term, and if we don't like it, sorry. It's kind of like for a developer or for somebody building, just saying, what does that mean? So what the focus comes down to is, let's work on our guidelines to make sure that we have those guidelines, those, either the, the size of the buildings, sometimes they get pretty, pretty detailed when, even the materials or the window spacing, whatever it is, in order to provide that guidance that they could see in black and white of, okay, that's what I could build there. So that's where the focus has been. I, I'm going to tell you, I mean jurisdictions loved putting in the general language, just like we have now, many jurisdictions have it, because there is kind of a feel to it, right? I could go to one neighborhood and I could say that just doesn't feel right, and we all kind of function that way. What state law is trying to do is take away jurisdictions' ability to say, I don't want development, so I'm going to say, that doesn't feel good because I don't want that type of housing. A lot of time, it's affordable housing. That's what the compromise was. What I would say is focus a lot on the design guidelines and make sure that whatever our guidelines spell out captures as much of that feel question as much as possible. But again, it's got to be like in black and white. They have to follow and say, check, 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 instead of leaving it open-ended.
Did we answer your question? Or you have your fault?
I think that would make me feel better. I mean, in, in other towns, I know that the plans have to go out to the neighbors, and it doesn't seem like we have that in Cloverdale. Is that something that we can consider?
Maybe we can bring this up under future agenda items to redo the, some of that other language.
When it's just a building permit for a single-family house on a single lot, those don't go out. That's not really a discretionary decision. If it's a larger project, it does go to planning commission, and we notice everyone within 300 feet, and the plans are available on the website, and we're open to discussing the plans. It's just like a single home on a single lot is non-discretionary, and I don't want to get too planner, planner talk, but it's really just, they made the setbacks, they have plans, it meets the building code, they get to proceed. But larger projects, they do, we do a 300-foot notice.
Deborah? Anyone else in the public want to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll bring it back to the dice. Further questions or comments?
So one thing on that, if, if I, just to clarify here, and talking to Jose, both Jose and Kevin here is, is so, like you're saying, black and white, a builder comes up and, okay, and he's going to follow the guidelines that Cloverdale sets in place. So I don't know if that, if, Deborah, if that helps answer your question at all. Cloverdale's going to retain the guidelines, but the builders can have to follow that. It's just, he's going to have it in black and white, so you're still going to have the Cloverdale guidelines in there that are going to have to be followed.
Please. One thing we could also focus on as we update zoning codes, it's also always good to look at the design guidelines, to say, is there anything there that's missing? How can we potentially, you know, not to discriminate anybody or any type of, of building or anything, but more of that look? How can we continue to look to provide that guidance that's there, that's allowed by state law, but prevents potentially a project or a building that just doesn't really fit into that neighborhood by giving clear standards of what does fit in?
Sorry, but you're welcome. The state makes things tough for us sometimes, it really does.
And if we don't comply with it, we're in danger of not being eligible for funding. So it's an, actually, it's an important update.
It's good intentions, too.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It was flagged by Housing and Community Development, and, and we, last thing that we want is to be not in compliance. But, you know, I love a design review process, but I don't like the ambiguity and I don't like inequalities. So it's a tough balance. Yeah, but we did, but in some of our really historical districts, we did not exercise it, and it's unfortunate that we didn't exercise that right when we, when we had it.
You have a quadplex sitting next to one of the most beautiful houses in Cloverdale.
Exactly.
Very modern quadplex. That's very nice. Don't get me wrong, it's just the wrong spot.
Yeah, I'm, I'm happy to introduce for first reading if the council's happy with that.
So, please do. Is it the top of the ordinance there, the whole?
Do you want me to read the whole thing in the, in the box? You got it? And I got it under the action, right? That's, it's placed under action tonight? Or do you want me to go?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, all right. I'm happy to introduce this item, first reading by title only of an ordinance entitled, An Ordinance of the City of Cloverdale Amending Cloverdale Municipal Code, CMC, Sections 18.09.030, Fences, Walls, and Hedges, 18.08.010, Planned Unit Development or PD Zoning District, 18.03.150, Design Review, Major and Minor, 10.28.070, 24-Minute Parking, Tables, 18.04.040, A, Uses permitted in Residential Zoning Districts, 18.05.030, slash, A, Uses permitted within Commercial Zoning District, Section 18.09.295, Special Development Standards for Live Work Units, and deleting Sections 18.09.160, Large Family Daycare.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Good, Mayor. Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Morgan?
Aye.
Mayor Lenz?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Walter Zepson?
Passes 40.
I'll bring it up for future agenda when we get there. All right, moving into new business, agreement with Flock Safety to purchase and install a citywide automated license plate recognition camera system.
Mayor, I want to introduce Chief Ferguson. Chief's is going to provide a presentation overview on this proposed action tonight, which again is in agreement with Flock Safety to purchase and install a citywide automated license plate recognition camera system. Included in the action tonight, or the staff's requested action, is authorization of a budget amendment to approve both the purchase and the first-year annual maintenance fee. So with that all introduction, I'll turn it over. Chief's going to walk you through a brief presentation that really provides an overview of what the ALPR system is intended to accomplish.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. Thank you, David. Before you tonight, as David mentioned, is a staff report requesting approval for a budget amendment in agreement with Flock Safety for the purchase and installation of a citywide automated license plate recognition, or ALPR, you'll hear that term a lot tonight, the system. I'm sure you've had a chance to review the attachments and probably have some questions. There was a lot to unpack in this. Included in that packet, though, is this presentation that hopefully answers some of those questions. I think what we'll do here is we'll go through this and then I'll go back up to my seat, because I'm pretty sure there's some community members here, at least one I already know is going to have a few questions. So, moving on, a little bit of background, Flock Safety Automated License Plate Recognition, or as we said, ALPR, is a public safety operating system that helps communities and law enforcement in thousands of cities work together to eliminate crime, protect privacy, and mitigate bias. Flock Safety communities have reported crime reductions of up to 70%. ALPR systems are most widely used and cost efficient. And if you look down below there, you'll see a couple of our neighboring cities here that have, and are currently using Flock Safety. The town of Sonoma, I think, is in the process of implementing their program and getting approval. There are some legislative requirements that we must adhere to, and there SB 34 does require, what we're here tonight for, is the ability for public to have comment about the system. And also, one of the key parts of SB 34 is it prohibits a public agency from selling, sharing, or transferring that information except to another public agency as specified. And what you'll see later is, we're prohibited from providing this information to anybody else, CarMax, any type of anything like that. It's exclusively for us or to share with other law enforcement agencies. So what is APR, ALPR? And I think this is going to be one of the most important things, if there are any questions, is exactly what does this do? And if you'll take a look at the picture up in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see that it's showing an observation of a capture of a license plate. To the left of that in that top corner is exactly what the information that we're going to be provided based on that through that ALPR system. As you can see, it'll give the plate, the state, the make, the color, the last time this vehicle traveled through there, and then how many times it's seen. Why is this critical? Because when you have incidents of converter thefts, catalytic converter thefts, you often have these people coming back and forth through our community multiple times. We'd be able to capture those vehicles each time they come through our city, and that's crucial in a case like that. As we go through the PowerPoint, I've listed a few of our more important cases where this would be hugely beneficial for the police department. beneficial for the police department in investigative standpoint. ALPRs capture the computer-readable images of license plates and vehicles. It gathers objective evidence and facts about the vehicles. Most important here is that last two words, "not people." This is not capturing information about individuals. This is not facial recognition. We'll learn a little bit more about that as we move on. What this does is it alerts police of wanted vehicles. In cases of stolen vehicles, I can assure you that if this program goes through, and the locations of the cameras, which we'll talk about, anybody who steals a car in the city of Cloverdale is not gonna make it out of this city without us being alerted on our phones that there's a stolen vehicle. There are two types of ALPR installations. One is a mobile in your vehicles, and there's also a fixed ALPR, which is a fixed to light poles and/or Flock Safety's own poles. As you will see later on in this, this is the decision that we've made to utilize the pole system and not in cars. How does it prevent crime? Proactive real-time alerts when stolen or wanted vehicles enter your city, assistance locating missing at-risk people, assistance solving hit-and-run accidents, help with identifying vehicles and sideshows. It's definitely an investigation tool that provide investigative leads to help solve crimes and lead to recovery of stolen property. As clear, its rates increase, crime rates decrease, and block cameras by themselves, visibly up on those poles, act as a deterrent. What it is not, this is equally important, it is not facial recognition, which as I explained earlier, is not tied to personal identifying information, such as a name, social security number, or somebody's date of birth. It is not used for immigration enforcement or traffic enforcement, and the data is automatically deleted after a specified time period, and in this case would be 30 days. Privacy. This is really important, and it might cause concerns for people, but hopefully this answers some questions. This footage is owned by the city, and it cannot be sold or shared by the vendor, and I kind of explained a little bit about what we are not able to do with that info. All this data is stored in the securely, in a government cloud, meeting FBI, CGIS requirements. There's an audit trail for each search, including user, date, time, and the reason for that search. Not facial recognition software, it's not used for traffic enforcement, and it has end-to-end encryption of all data, meaning it's not accessible, it requires encryption in order to recover that data. Not connected to registration data or third-party database. I mentioned Carfax, DMV, and there's no personal identifying information contained at all in the database, database. What I mean by that is, it does not provide us the registered owner. It provides us the plate number, the state, but it does not provide us who the registered owner is. There's a transparency portal available. What this does is this allows us to have a website, or on our website, provide not the information of the vehicles by any means, but what this system is designed to do, why we're utilizing it. Also allows us to load our Lexipol policy, which is a requirement here, that we had a policy outlining this program. This, this transparency portal is what we would upload for the public to be able to view and see. I already mentioned that there was a 30-day retention, and after the 30 days, it gets deleted, unless that we are working an investigation, then we would keep that data longer, and only under those circumstances while we're working that investigation. This takes human bias out of the crime solving by detecting objective data, data, and detecting events that are objectively illegal, such as stolen vehicles. Policy. I've included in this packet as well, our newly-designed Lexipol policy. When we first started talking about this, of course, we have to have a policy, and Lexipol fortunately offers a policy in this. However, we catered it a little bit to Cloverdale, which is typical how our policies work. And again, what's important here is, this is on a need-to-know, right-to-know basis. Requested information is pertinent and necessary to the requesting agency in initiating, furthering, or completing the performance of a law enforcement activity. Right-to-know, requester is acting in an official capacity and has statutory authority to obtain the information being sought. So, let's get down to the, that's some bolts of it all here. The one-time installation fee of $19,750, that's inclusive of the five cameras and the installation in our city. That also includes Flock Safety. I believe they had to install two of their own poles in the cameras, because we would not wanna be putting those on anything other than Cloverdale-owned poles, and also in city property, our city territory. There's an annual recurring maintenance cost of $17,500. The packet which you have shows, I think, a total of $34,000 and some change there. That is for the two-year contract. That includes all of the fees, maintenance, annual cost for the two-year period. So if the council agrees to this, we wouldn't be looking at another annual reoccurring maintenance cost until somewhere in the neighborhood of 2025. Software package. When you talk about the annual maintenance, there's probably questions about what does that include? Well, it's the software package, cloud-based data storage, first and foremost. They also monitor the health of the device. If there's a camera that is not functioning properly, they will come out at no cost, and they will address the issue with the camera, including replacement of that camera, if it's, if it's a faulty camera. It's a full-time technician, 24/7, at no additional cost. And one of the nice features in this, it comes with public relations support, whether that's involving government affairs, our education partners, or simple media releases that need to be done. They're there for that support. And that's all included in the reoccurring maintenance cost. So as we talked about earlier, there was two types of camera systems. We've thought the fixed camera system with the perimeter deployment would best suit the city of Cloverdale. It's what the city of Hillsburg has done, and it's what the city of Windsor is doing, has done, and then what Sonoma will also be doing. The five-camera locations that were originally thought to be the best for the city, I also reached out and sought input from all of the officers who are out there every day, who sometimes have to chase these folks, and sometimes have to realize what is the best strategy here. This was also confirmed and agreed upon by the experts at Flock Safety. I provided them with a diagram of the locations in question, and with the exception of one, we moved one location to Sand Home versus Asti and the overpass at the south end of town. This way, we would capture anybody trying to get out of the area on that back road of, out Sand Home and out by Renner. And we've gone over this multiple times, figuring out the best, and this seems to be the best. These, these appear to be able to capture anybody coming in or trying to leave this city, once they hit our incorporated jurisdiction. The benefits, clearly, I, I've said that we've had some major cases where this would have been hugely beneficial. I'll cite two of them right off the bat, at the quick stop at the north end of town. I think folks caught on to the fact that you could come off 128, hit it, and get out. Having a camera here would have helped tremendously in identifying those vehicles that both fled out that way after armed robbery, where the second one included shots fired by the suspects on a local witness resident. So it would have been hugely beneficial to have those captured on camera and moving forward in our investigation. We also had two incidents of vehicle versus pedestrian hit-and-runs, the one at Hillsburg, where a suspect fled, and then again on First Street, where the suspect fled. Both of those locations would be where we would have cameras installed. There would have been no exit for those individuals without us knowing what car went through there at that time. And then, I think I mentioned, and if I didn't, I wanna just reiterate, on a stolen vehicle, even if that's stolen from another jurisdiction, soon as it lands in our city, we integrate, we can integrate with other Flock Safety. As soon as that lands in the jurisdiction, the alert comes out. So, and that's the same that would happen for ours, if they went into one of their jurisdictions. This has already happened. I have an example. One of our cars fled over, went over the hill, landed in Legport, got a call from their lieutenant, your, your car just rolled through our city. So, that's how that works. It's a fantastic process. I already talked about the catalytic converter thefts. And I know I went through that kind of quick, but I, I definitely am here for any questions, and hopefully I can answer them. There's a lot to it. So I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Chief, start with the council.
Yeah, Chief, actually, just kind of back to the, the AI question. Obviously, it's using AI to do the detection of the plates and the numbers and the letters. Is it also doing a match on, like, the license plate, and to determine if that is, matches the make and model and the color of the car?
Yes.
Okay. So if somebody's swapping license plates, you're, they're gonna get flagged.
What, what it'll do is it'll capture color, make, model, and then it'll match it to numerous other cars with that similar makeup. And that's, that's one feature that it has. And then that goes into a pool for other cities as well. So if that color, make, and model comes out as a car involved, we're gonna know.
And just a couple of questions about, is this a, this is a general fund transfer, David?
The proposed budget amendment involves the use of police facility impact fees.
Okay, so this is coming out of the Impact Fund?
Correct.
Okay, okay. And so that kind of leads me to the next question. So, I mean, obviously, you wouldn't be presenting this to us if you didn't think that it was a viable, useful product, and your, your colleagues in other cities weren't, weren't also using it. But I'm wondering, how, you know, how effective do you think it'll really be for, for Cloverdale? Like, will it help you control costs? Will it help you, you know, how, how is, how will it specifically help the officers, you know, like, on a daily or weekly basis?
Yeah, well, let's start with the fact that we can't be everywhere at all times. So from, from that standpoint, right there, it's gonna be hugely beneficial. In all the cases I cited right there, we didn't have an officer present at the time that happened. And by the time we could get out there, in almost all of those cases, we were one officer on. And so by the time we get out there, and we deal with that and call in other resources. So let's start with, you know, being alerted to it much quicker. Second, it saves a lot of investigative time and money from a police standpoint, and if we can apprehend those much quicker and get to the registered owners much quicker, I think that helps. In all of the cases that we've dealt with here, with the exception of one, which was the hit-and-run at Hillsburg, we landed that fairly quickly, simply because of a NEXL that went out. But some of these other ones took time to capture, took almost the entire department to get over and get the four individuals that shot at a resident at the other armed robbery. So you're, you're talking about a lot of resources and a lot of things that, that happened there. So from an investigative standpoint, it would certainly save in that regard, too.
Doesn't sound like there was any one thing that prompted looking into this, though. It sounds like it was, it's, it's maybe it's a technology that is coming along, and there were, there were multiple instances that we've already had. It sounds, it sounds like there wasn't one instance that made you go out and find a solution.
No.
Okay?
No. And, and I think the success rate of this, and reducing crime, is hugely beneficial and very much a part of why these are important. They are a crime reduction measure, and I think anytime we talk about our community, we, we wanna, you know, ensure that everybody's safe and we're reducing crime. This is a great way to do it. Hillsburg's had nothing but success. I'm sure Windsor is, had nothing but success.
And it sounds like there's support in the department for this as well, if they were giving input, and they were consistent with the company's advice on the locations. Or, yeah, can you speak to that a little bit?
As far as our organization and the, and the members?
Yeah.
Yeah, when I reached out to them to get their input and, and solicit feedback on the locations of the cameras and the system itself, just about everybody responded. They were very glad to hear Cloverdale was interested in this. They think it's been long overdue. And all of them thought it would be hugely beneficial for them.
That's most of my questions at this time. Thank you.
Chief, I got a question for you.
Sure.
It doesn't capture the, for stolen vehicles, it doesn't capture registered owner, you say, so, I mean, maybe totally off, how are we gonna find the registered owner, or how do we know here?
Yeah, yeah. So what it does is it, it alerts us to the vehicle that was reported stolen. The rest is up to us, right? We're gonna pursue that, we're gonna stop that, and we're gonna go from there. Is there a chance that that individual who's driving that car may not have had knowledge, may have gotten the car, you know, yes, but we're still gonna do our part, and this gives us that ability to get on that car quick, to get out there, to ensure that. It still lets us recover the stolen vehicle, which is paramount. The rest of the parts about who the RO is, whether they had knowledge of the vehicle being stolen, that's part of our investigative aspects that we deal with at a later time.
Thank you.
My first question, I guess, is for the city, and it's about, I know the city of Nobato was able to get a grant to do the same thing, like, have we researched getting a grant for this?
I'll answer that. I have not researched a grant for that.
Because I think that would be helpful.
We certainly can look into it.
And then, how many cars, roughly speaking, are stolen a year in Cloverdale? And I know it's not just for stolen vehicles, but...
Yeah, I don't have those numbers for you, but I can, I'd be happy to get those for you and, and send those to you.
And then, another question is, I know you said, you know, it wouldn't have anything to do with immigration, but if ICE asks our police department for some data from our system, would we give it to ICE?
Absolutely not. We do not collaborate with ICE, and that would not be something that we would, we would provide them.
And are they able on Highway 101 to capture license plates already, or not?
I'm not 100% sure in this northern area. I know, once they reach our city, if these cameras are installed, that's where it will capture. But I don't know specifically on Highway 101 if they have similar devices set up. I don't believe they are in our area.
I'm a big supporter of this, obviously. It would have helped you solve a lot of crimes a lot quicker, more efficient, and safer, which is a great thing. Talked about the catalytic converter thefts. I know the citizens said there was, I think, five cars broken into at one time, and that car ended up being wanted in multiple cities, for hundreds of these. And so, even though they knew the make and model of the vehicle, it had already left our town by the, by the time the single officer could get there. So the fact that they could get on there, get that plate, now they know who, who it is, basically, or where to start the investigation, at least. And it would have saved dozens of more people, their vehicles being broken into and damaged. So I think it's a great thing. I think you hit all the spots. I was looking at your, you know, it's just the ins and outs, to make sure that our town is protected, basically, is all you're doing. And I know right now, there was, actually, before your time, there was another hit-and-run that killed a kid under the Sitzes Fair overpass. And that officer spent years investigating, and even though he had a good idea, it was no way to prove it. If you would have had that vehicle and that license plate, you would have known that that happened, instead of having that license plate and that vehicle fixed the day it happened and sold within the week, and now there's no proof and no, no evidence. So there's an unsolved that we have here that, that probably had a good chance of being solved with these. And so I look at that, that family of a teenager that will never have that closure, because, or maybe never, we'll see.
Right.
I know you're doing a great job with all of these, so I should never say never. However, it, it would have, it wouldn't have been, I mean, we're going on probably 15 years at least right now since that one happened. So, you know, I, I'm, this is a very minimal cost for, for a huge protection for Cloverdale.
Agreed.
Teresa, I wanna ask you a question. What do, what do you think about something like this in, in our town? I put you on the spot.
I think it's like, a great system to have, 'cause there's like, a lot that like, goes on with like, especially like, the cars here. One question I do have, though, does it calculate, like, or can it catch like, cars like, speeding out?
No, but we do have a radar trailer that does capture that data, and we use that data effectively in, in, you know, traffic calming measures. But no, these will not capture speed. They're not designed for that. Yeah.
I got a question. Teresa, thanks for bringing up. You reminded me of something, so thank you. How about, and I know it doesn't get speeding, we've got the trailer and, and we're catching license plates. Now, I don't know about placement of the cameras. Can it catch the guy that's doing all the donuts on Foothill Boulevard, and every single cross, crossing there? Drives me crazy. I'm like, why is this guy, I mean, is it gonna catch that license plate?
Well, A, if we got a report of the, the vehicle with a make and model, and we, and that car then traveled to... that car then traveled to any one of those locations where, which probably is highly likely, then yes, we would. But in and of itself, on that location you're talking about, no. But again, it's, it's designed so that we capture anything that comes into the incorporated city of Cloverdale, commits a crime or whatever, and then takes off. And those are strategically located on purpose for that reason, right? They may commit the crime in the off streets, but getting out's a different story.
Maybe you know this statistic off the top of your head and maybe you don't, but, you know, it just seems to me that stolen, stolen cars are even more likely to, the occupants of stolen cars are even more likely to, to commit crimes or maybe even violent crimes. Do you think that that's a true perception? Or is there a, a rule of thumb? Or is that, is that just a perception?
Well, I, I don't, I don't know that that's fair without providing true statistics of that, but I, I would say that I wouldn't disagree with that. The act of stealing the car in and of itself is a felony by itself. And usually is often followed by other crimes, so, yeah, I wouldn't disagree with that.
My question is regarding the, the annual fee. And is there going to be a contract or could that go up in five years?
That's an excellent question for which I also ask. So the fees that you're seeing right now cover this two-year period. There is that probability that there's an increase. Technology, sometimes those things happen, and you'd be facing that as a city come year 2025, when this contract expires. And that, as far as how much, could not give me an answer on that. So I, I can't really explain that to you, what that could be. But the answer to that is yes, there could be.
So it's only for two years?
This contract covers the two-year period. Yes.
I think kind of like a cellphone. If you raise it, raise the rates and switch companies if we have to. But we'll see where technology takes us.
Yeah.
Anything else from the council? Chief, thank you. I want to open up to public so they can have questions for you. Please.
Good evening, everybody. I'm Walker James Thomas Rogino. I say no to the Surveillance Society. I don't trust it. Data gets collected, they call it a hack, but data gets tracked. And I just, I just want to state my objection. I think it's, it's not a progressive policy, it's a regressive policy. And it addresses, the whole defund the cops thing is about militarizing the police, which, which ends up militarizing society. The corporation flock safety makes out like a bandit, but what about the private citizens? I have very severe privacy concerns about this, so I'm kind of objecting to it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
James Smith. Like my friend, I've got privacy concerns, as we learned earlier this evening. There's a large constituent in Cloverdale that doesn't trust the police. As we know, as the chief knows, it is illegal for the state to give out CCW information. When a court ruling came down that they didn't like, they let it all out, including law enforcement and judges. Totally put them at risk. So data collected is data that could be used to hurt people. It's the way it's always been. It's the nature of human beings. You hurt me, I get you back. Do we get a chance to vote on this, or is it just forced upon us?
The council, I'll answer that if you, if you're looking for an answer.
I am.
The council will be voting on it. This is your opportunity to speak on it.
So the, the people of Cloverdale don't get a chance to vote on it before we're surveilled?
I wouldn't call it surveilled, but at this point, yes, absolutely. The, the city chose us to represent you as the community and your constituents. And so we are making the decisions for the community itself.
The chief said that the information on the plates will not be tied to the owner. He also said that they could use that to help find at-risk people. The two statements don't go together.
You want, you want me to explain, or you want to explain?
So let me, a couple of things, I want to just circle back real quick. I want to make sure that the public is aware of this. It's not a surveillance tool, which is why we didn't use the word surveillance. It's not what we're doing. We're not surveilling people. What this does is a useful tool that helps us in the event of stolen vehicles, suspicious vehicles that are committing crimes in our community. And it does not provide us registered owner information. However, to answer your question, with the information that we do get, the plate, the make, the model, in a case of a stolen vehicle that we get an alert on, we are going to run that plate to determine the registered owner. Because we may have to go to that house and locate or contact. That's the purpose of that, but it does not provide us the registered owner information. In the other cases, again, once we get the, the image, we're going to run that. We're legal, legally capable of running that, no different than a police officer out on the street currently can run a license plate for a registered owner in the course of their investigation. I think there's a difference between, I don't want you to feel that we're collecting data and then breaching by letting that data go out everywhere. We're legally bound from doing that.
The state was legally bound from letting out that CCW information, and nothing happened to them. Nothing ever happens to the government.
Again, I, I can't speak to that because I'm not aware of that, wasn't a part of that. What I can say is, we are legally bound by it. Policies also direct us, the laws first and foremost on this.
And we get some safety built into this? If something did leak out, massifying?
Well, fortunately for you, legislation covers that for you. Yes, we could be civilly liable if we, if we allow a breach in that, or we provide that information. The city can be civilly liable for that. And the individual who released that can be liable, liablely held for that, possibly even criminally.
Would the city be willing to cooperate? I know the state wasn't super willing to cooperate after the CCW breach.
I, I don't quite understand what you mean by is the city willing to cooperate with...
Well, if there was an investigation, let's use me as an example. I don't want to throw anybody else under the bus. Let's say information was leaked and people found out something about me and they wanted to come to my house and harass me over it. They, you know, I spoke out about something else, they found out where I live now because of this breach. And I go to sue the city? Is the city council going to protect the breacher?
I'm gonna go with no because the law says they can't. We would certainly investigate where that breach came from. And then there's also liabilities for whoever leaked that information out. There are liabilities. And that's stated in the, in the, in the law, in SB 34.
Don't take up any more of your time. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate the, the questions. Anyone else? Michael, is there anyone in the, I can't see right now? No hands in the audience? Okay, so we will bring it back to the dais. Any further questions or comments from anyone here?
I was just gonna go a little bit further with, to answer the question. He asked about the missing persons. And those plates, you know, you usually see amber alerts with the plates linked to it. That will alert, and that's why that one was brought up, because it would alert, like a stolen plate, it would alert to that amber alert for that missing child or whatever's going on.
Okay, anyone want to read a resolution or...
Mayor, move to read the resolution. Resolution of the City Council of City of Cloverdale approving an agreement with flock safety in an amount not to exceed $37,250 for the initial purchase, installation, and first-year annual maintenance fee of the citywide automated license plate recognition ALPR camera system, plus a 10% contingency for potential costs overruns authorizing a FY 2324 budget amendment to the Public Safety Impact Fund in the amount of $37,250 and authorizing the city manager to execute said agreement.
Second?
Have a first and second?
Councilmember Wheeler?
Aye.
Councilmember Bagby?
Aye.
Councilmember Morganstern?
I'm gonna say no right now. I think it'd be important to see if we could get grants. And I, I don't know because, I don't know if it really would stop like 60, 70% of the crime. I don't even know how many stolen vehicles we have per year yet, so I'm hesitant to say yes. I'm gonna say no.
Mayor Lands?
Aye.
All right, that is three yes, one no, and one absent.
Motion passes. All right, subcommittee reports. Chief, thank you for your presentation. I didn't say that. Appreciate it for answering the questions. And thank you for the, all the questions, you, too. Appreciate it. Subcommittee, the Finance, Admin, and Police, our next meeting is June 5th. Planning and Sustainability?
Our next meeting is June 20th.
Public Works?
Next meeting is 27 June.
City and School?
June 19.
Homeless Community Advisory Group is June, June 12?
12 June, yep.
All right, any legislative reports and letters of support?
Mayor, members of council, added to your packet after it was published is a letter signed by Mayor Lands, addressed to Senator McGuire and Assemblymember Jim Wood regarding a request to support ongoing funding for addressing homelessness. Much of the funds that have been set aside are dedicated by the state, are one-time funds and particularly through the League of California Cities advocating for a commitment of ongoing funding. So I just wanted to point to the, the letter in your packet that was provided to both Senator McGuire's office as well as Assemblymember Wood and the League by email today.
City Manager Report?
Mayor, members of council, just a quick update on, on a, on a few items. As noted in the agenda packet, there is a Mayor and Council Members Association Dinner on June 8th. Just wanted to peg that item. If you're interested in attending, please let us know and we will RSVP on your behalf. Included in that will be a presentation and, and followed by, or in conjunction with, with the dinner, and that will be covered by, by the city. Likewise, City Communication Chief Counsel Supervisor Gore is planning an area tour on Wednesday, May 31st. The itinerary is, is in flux. Much of what I sent to you, I think, represents the, the, the interests in visiting various projects within Cloverdale or surrounding area. The, really kind of the key, you know, you can attend part or, or all of it if you like. Probably what I would really recommend is that there's gonna be lunch at the Veterans, the Veterans Center. So if you'd like to join for lunch, please, please let me know. We'll make sure that you're, you're on the list. Last but not least, the Russian River Watershed Association is going to be on...
June 1st.
Enjoying their 20-year anniversary. So congratulations to the, the association. And that is scheduled on June 1st, and it's gonna be at their, at their center in... If you're interested in, in attending that lunch, let me know. We'll also get you on the RSVP.
Thank you, David. City Attorney, Jose?
Just quickly, just wanted to update the council. My office did participate in the, the Russian River Water Forum. I know there was a kickoff meeting, we participated. It's just a kickoff meeting, going through some of the backgrounds and starting to talk about the different groups that are the different working groups that'll be formed, such as the Water Supply and Fisheries Working Group, the Economics and Finance Working Group, the Governance Working Group, Water Rights and Water Management Working Groups. So that's all kicking off. I'm sure we'll have more information as, as that comes down. That way Cloverdale can make sure to participate.
Thank you, sir. Councilmember Reports. We have Bagby listed here. Redden, do you have any more you want to add?
Yeah, I said, but in writing, but the way we're doing it, the links don't seem to work, Mike, so maybe we can figure out something else. Maybe we could figure out another way to distribute it.
Reports?
Well, I'll wear a condom.
For, for the information that, like David was saying, May 31st, Supervisor Gore's doing a tour, looking at a lot of different successes we've had in Cloverdale. I say this because I know that you were sitting in these seats and probably took part in things like the walking bridge across First Street Bridge. It's coming to fruition starting this year. And so we're meeting out there after 20-something years of pushing to get this. So if you would like to join us, it'd be great. We have different things with new radio towers and the CERT is showing off their rescue trailers with, you know, to give power to neighborhoods. Alexander Valley Healthcare, the groundbreaking for them. You know, there's a myriad of things we're trying to do, and it's a full day. So I don't know if it's posted anywhere, David, yet. It's, I know it's, like you said, it's been a fluid document as we try to organize and get it all the time set. But if you have questions or you want to get involved, you know how to find me and I'll, I'll get you a, a calendar.
Mayor, real, real quick, if I can. One other announcement. I heard back from Sonoma County Ag and Open Space, agendized by the Board of Supervisors yesterday, was a consideration of the acquisition of the Lita Ranch property, which also involved transferring the deed to the city. I'm really happy to report that the Board of Supervisors did approve the acquisition of the property yesterday, and, and staff from the Open Space did record the, the notice of exemption today. And I think the, the timeline for final closure is June 30th. So by the end of this fiscal year, we will be the new owners of the, the Lita Ranch property if there are no, no hiccups. So pretty exciting news to see that, that happen. And, you know, this will be something that we'll, we'll be, I'm sure, talking about further at, at council subcommittees.
All right, council agenda or direction on future agenda items? Design guidelines. I'd like to get that on a subcommittee so we can start looking into it, see where we're at, and see if it's the late 1900s or if we're up to date.
For the record, is that Planning and Sustainability most likely?
It'd probably be the best fit. What do you, what does the council think? All right, well...
For the record, Mayor, we also have the Potential Bonding Capacity Survey scope to Finance, Admin, and Police. Is that correct?
Yes, yes.
And do we need to bring, this might be for Attorney Sanchez, the peace flag resolution? Do we need to bring it back to council to rescind it? Does that need to be...
That wasn't part of the, the policy. The policy was where, or what flags were gonna be flown over city halls, or was that, if I remember correctly, so...
And just for the council, we'll take a look at what needs to be done for that. I know it was a resolution allowing for the entering, there was still gonna be an entering of the agreement, and there's no agreement that has been entered into. So that, that may be enough because an agreement was gonna have to be followed, have to be entered into pursuant to that resolution. So, but we'll, we'll double check if the council needs to do anything.
Thank you.
A question about the bonding capacity. So I'm, I'm assuming that that's gonna be a team effort with chief and finance director and public works director and our, our, our contract city engineer to put together a kind of a, a bigger list that will probably need to be honed down. Is that sort of the plan?
Absolutely. Staff will, will collaborate. It'll, it'll most certainly be on the senior staff agenda to recommend and identify a list of projects for the subcommittees to review, which ultimately then would, could come back to council for, for further deliberation.
Right, can you just make sure that we've got a copy of the SIP in our packet for that, just so that we can refamiliarize ourselves again with that pretty lengthy list? that, just so that we can refamiliarize ourselves again with that pretty lengthy list?
Anything else? Teresa, thank you. Your last meeting, it's been a pleasure. Uh, our next meeting is scheduled for June 14th, 2023. This meeting is adjourned at 9:08, and thank you.